Welcome you to your boardroom and ask the new clerk to call the roll.
Supervisor Long?
Here.
Supervisor Foy?
Yes.
Supervisor Zaragoza?
Yeah.
And Supervisor Bennett?
Here. And Rosa, since you're visiting us, would you lead us in the pledge, please? All right, we need a motion for the minutes of July 29th. We have a motion and a second, and we're ready to vote. And the minutes are approved, and now we're at agenda review. Mr. Powers?
Thank you, Chair Bennett. Couple of items. Item 23, Harvard Department approval for the Harvard Department Director to execute an exclusive right to negotiate agreement with Brighton Management for the development of a hotel project and Channel Islands Harbor properties for the development of an apartment project at Channel Islands Harbor. A PowerPoint presentation had been submitted, and five comment letters from Mike Mercadante, Bonnie Mercadante, David Wolfe, Judy and Larry Martin, and Sandy Bardos have been submitted. And on this item, we also request that it be removed from the consent agenda. Apologize, it should have been on the regular from the start, and I know each of you has expressed that, so. Item 27, Healthcare Agency, Ventura County Medical Center approval of an agreement with Nicole Golding, MD for Attending Physician Physical Medicine and Rehabilitation Services. A revised board letter has been submitted. Item 40, CEO's Office, public hearing regarding adoption of the Second Amendment to the 2013-16 memorandum of agreement with SEIU. A board letter, Exhibit 1, and a revised Exhibit 2 have been submitted. Item 41, CEO's Office, approval of adjustments to the salary ranges based on market-based average for classifications covered by the management resolution. A board letter, Exhibit 1, and a revised Exhibit 2 have been submitted. In addition, page 11 of the agenda was modified to include a fourth recommendation to the board letter. Item 46, Resource Management Agency, public hearing regarding CUP PL 130132, an adoption of a mitigated negative declaration under CEQA to authorize an outdoor law enforcement training facility in Simi Valley. PowerPoint has been submitted. And finally, item 50, Agricultural Commissioner, receive and file the Ventura County Annual Crop and Livestock Report for 2013. A PowerPoint presentation has been submitted. All documents have been distributed and posted to the web. And that's it. Thank you.
Very appropriate that they'd come during the fair. All right, the crop report. All right, board members, other modifications?
The agenda is modified.
All right, the agenda's been modified. We're now at, oh, we're ready to vote for the approved agenda. All right, the agenda modifications have been approved. Now we have our moment of inspiration. We have another of our wonderful foster parents to come in, Sonia Correa. And Sonia, welcome. Thank you for coming and being our moment of inspiration this morning.
Good morning. My name is Sonia Correa. My husband and I have--
Sonia, I'm gonna ask you just to pull those two microphones a little closer.
Sure.
That's better?
Is that better?
Yeah, great.
My husband and I have been fostering for about a year and a half now. And the reason we got into foster care is because my husband and I have been married 25 years, and we have no children. We always wanted children, but through many years of infertility treatments, that failed. I knew that God had a plan for us, we just didn't know what. So one day, I just felt it in my heart that we needed to do foster care. After many years of praying, my husband decided that we were gonna try this, and we did. We got it. When we decided to do foster care, we went in knowing that we were gonna change, we thought we were gonna change, the life of a child, but where we were wrong, because that child, each child, has changed our life, not them change us. I mean, not us change them. We have fostered 13 children to this day, and each one of those children has been such a joy in our life. We currently are fostering three children that are a possible adoption, which we want. These children range from two years, one year, and five months. They're all in diapers. They're a challenge, but we love them so much. So hopefully, that'll take place, and if it doesn't, that's okay. We're willing to continue on to our next journey. But as we continue to foster, we know that each child deserves to have that unconditional love, because it is not their fault that they are in that situation that they are in. So when they come in, we give them all the love we can possibly give them, and I treat them, we all treat them as if they are ours. And I'm so thankful to my family, because my family has opened up their heart as well, and they always, they always know that they're our kids, and they just, they're always ours. I mean, they just come in and they grab a hold of their heart as well. Our first placement back in February, when we first started, to this day, we still have a relationship with them. We spend Thanksgiving, we have spent Thanksgiving and Christmas together, and we include their mom as well, and she's so thankful to this day. So I just, I know that fostering is not easy. Our journey has not been easy, but it is the most rewarding thing that we have ever done in our life. It has opened up our life, it has opened, it's expanded not only our life, it has opened up our heart, it's opened our eyes to so many things we didn't realize. All these years, we lived a selfish life, I think, and now we wanna give back, and that's how we're giving back, by taking care of these children that so need love. And it's so important that not only as we foster these children, but that we mentor the mothers, or I know that I do, I try to talk to the parents and mentor them, because that is so important to keep that relationship. I've noticed that when I've kept that relationship with the parents, with the mom, that the children see that. And they, those children see that I'm having that relationship with their mom, and it makes things so much easier, because they know that we are, the children see that we are there for them. It's not about me, it's not about the mom, it's about the kids. And so that's just so important, and I know that fostering has just been such, it's just been an honor and a privilege to care for these children, and I'm so, so grateful to you guys, because I've received so much encouragement from, not only from the county, the social workers, but also from our church. We have a, it is called Defending the Fatherless, I don't know if you've heard of it, but it is awesome, because we all gather together, foster parents and adoptive parents each month. We talk about the children, we, any needs that we may need, if anybody has those, we just, we're always there to support each other. So our church is very supportive of what we do, but the county as well, and so I'm just so thankful to my family, to the county, to our church, and to our family. And I'm just thankful, we know that fostering has been not only an amazing thing for us, we know that we have to open up our hearts, and this love will hurt when they go back. They take a piece of my heart, each and every single one of them takes a piece of my heart, but what they give me is much more than what I give them. So I'm just so thankful to you guys.
Well, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
A couple of things, I know we use this line recently, which is, when they go, they take a piece of your heart.
Absolutely.
And when your heart grows back, it grows back bigger.
Yes, it does.
You know? So thank you very much. What church are you associated with?
Calvary Chapel, Oxnard.
Ah, great. And that church is really starting to step up in terms of the whole foster care program.
Yes, it is. We have, the Defending the Fatherless is now going through Calvary Chapel of Camrio, Oxnard, Reality, and Ventura Missionary. So we now have that support from all these churches, which is awesome. Yes.
Well, this is exactly what our moment of inspiration is about. It's inspirational to hear you talk, and to think about 13 children that didn't spend a week, or a month, or three months in an institution that could scar them for the rest of their lives.
Yes.
But instead, they spent that time in a warm, loving home, and it's obvious how much love you're giving those children. And then to help them rehabilitate with their biological parents--
Yes.
--by showing their biological parents, by showing the children that you accept their biological parents, really is so healing for them. So thank you and your husband very much--
Oh, thank you.
--for doing that. Thanks for taking the time to come and talk. Every time one of you talks here, it increases our chances of finding more people to become foster parents here. The message goes out through all the people, there are many people listening to this broadcast right now in their offices and stuff, and so thank you very much for taking the time--
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
We really appreciate that.
Thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
Okay, we're now at the consent calendar, items 10 through 39, with item 23 polled. All right.
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to make a comment on item 20. I don't wanna pull anything--
All right, great. What's that? She wants to comment on 20. That's it? Go ahead, Supervisor Long, you wanna comment on 20?
Okay, it's, it is on consent, and it's the annual report that we receive on the real estate fraud prosecution program. I just wanted to, and I know the board has read it, and expect others to, one, again, commend the District Attorney's Office, commend Miles Wies, and commend the team that works on this whole real estate fraud issue here in our county, which is still going on, and that's what the report shows. And I think when you read the paragraph that talks about, "During the peak of the real estate bubble, home equity lines of credit were issued massive numbers by banks with little regard for borrowers' ability to repay them." And we know what was a result of all of that. And what the concern is being raised now in the report by the District Attorney's Office and the Real Estate Fraud Division is that there's a bubble, and this bubble's now coming to fruition, and we're going to see more and more challenges, I think, with homeowners who are over their head, but more importantly, homeowners who are being defrauded by folks who step forward saying they can save them, rescue them, help them. So just a heads up, I know our REFAT group is very actively engaged still on a regular basis with the District Attorney's Office, and the public should just really be, once again, the more we can talk and keep this in the front of the public's awareness, the better for these folks who are gonna face these challenges. Other than that, I thank the DA's office for continuing this effort.
Mr. Chair, I wanna add a little bit to that, too, you know, as Supervisor mentioned, you know, it's extremely important that we continue working with DA's office and REFAT and the Board of Realtors. In the past, you know, we've had town hall meetings regarding the real estate fraud, but I just wanna commend the DA's office for an excellent job in keeping abreast of what's happening with the real estate market.
And on item 34, I'd just like to make a comment. I really appreciate the staff's efforts to try to improve the fiber optic network here for the county and county employees. And Supervisor Zaragoza and I had a board letter on some months ago, asking county staff to also try to facilitate as much as possible the extension of high-speed fiber optics into the rural areas of Ventura County. Now, that's one of the things we can do to keep Ventura County really the special place that it is, if we can make those rural areas very friendly in terms of high-speed access, people can do things there without having to build huge, massive infrastructure, et cetera. So I wanna congratulate staff for what they're doing here at the county level, and remind us that, I know they're working at it, and there's some efforts that are proving to have some fruit come forward with them, and just wanna call that out again, and appreciate those efforts. Do you have any other comments on the consent calendar before we get a motion? We need a motion to approve the consent calendar, everything except item 23.
It's nice to see that vacation of the roads succeed this time. I know it's come before us a couple of times--
Yeah, it's worked out, right. All righty.
No second? It's a second card?
Yeah. I voted yes, but we don't have a motion or second yet.
Oh, second. Where's it?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All righty.
There's our yes.
There we go. You know, you can save time.
There we go.
All righty. And now we're at item 23. Let's go ahead and have our discussion of that. That's the item that we pulled off the consent calendar. Mr. Chair, you wanna give us a quick presentation of this? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just wanted to share real quick, you know, that we did have this agenda item, and normally, we put this agenda items in the regular agenda, but it's in consent. And we had quite a few letters come to my office and also to the Board of Supervisors, but maybe Lynn can explain to us why we put this on the agendas, because it's an ERN, an exclusive right to negotiate with the two developers over at the peninsula and at the harbor, so maybe Lynn can give us more information on that.
Yes, I apologize. Normally, these items are never on consent, and somehow, with all the checks we had in place, I was out of town, John was out of town, it somehow got missed and ended up on consent. So I assumed it would be pulled off, which is why there's a slide here today, once I got back yesterday. This is, you probably remember when Gray Star held this leasehold, which is the Casa Serena lobster trap leasehold, this entire area, that the approved project for environmental review included a combination of housing and hotel. We did, as you know, have a professional hotel locator come out and also take a look, and he agreed that the space warrants room for both. That would be difficult to take up the entire space with a hotel, and it would be difficult to support completion of a promenade all the way around the peninsula and some of the public amenities that the board has always said it wants in this area, access for the public, sitting areas and so forth, just on the back of a hotel. So rather than having a hotel company, both parties, honestly, in this ERN are interested and capable of doing both pieces. The question is, by the end of the exclusive rights process, what proposal will come forward? And we have an experienced apartment developer, Mr. Telefson is here, you've seen him before, and an experienced hotel developer, Mr. Joseph Phan of Brighton Management, who owns some 47 hotels, including a number in Ventura County, quite a large number in Ventura County, who also just purchased the Hampton Inn leasehold right here. One of the concerns that seemed to pop up in the letters, which I'm sorry, I just got last night around 5:00, is about the park. All we have talked about here is, given this kind of odd configuration, is there an opportunity, do the hotels need to be a little closer together, and is there an opportunity to have an even better park location with views down the channel than what we have now? This is sort of a hidden park with very limited parking. If it doesn't work out that a better location is available, it will stay where it is and be improved. That's the position we've taken so far. But in any case, this is just a right to negotiate. There's nothing here except the obligation to perform, to bring a proposal forward, and to meet with the public. There is no obligation on the county's part or on their part to move forward beyond that point. So unless there are any questions, I know Mr. Telefson's also turned--
Supervisor-- Yeah, Mr. Chair, you know, just to put things into perspective here, as you know, several weeks ago, we asked Lynn to give us a report on the harbor, the differences between the harbor and Seabridge over in Oxnard. And the Oxnard City Council put an AHHA committee together, and they went over to Seabridge to explain to them, to talk about the 50-year agreement that we had with the city of Oxnard. That 50-year agreement has been extended till November, and currently, we hope to start working with the city of Oxnard to find to and maybe get an agreement in the 50-year agreement. What has happened, the city council set up an AHHA committee, and from that AHHA committee, they said a subcommittee. And the subcommittee is headed by Mr. Mike Mercanti, and his task is to look at the governance, supposedly, of the harbor. And some of the ideas that they had is they want to come up with an authority of the harbor, and I wouldn't assure if that authority will work. I know that we had a commission before there at the harbor, and the question I believe that we have here is that we're co-mingling the harbor and Seabridge. Seabridge is in the Oxnard city limits, the harbor is part of, it's in the city limits and part in the county, and I believe that we're co-mingling those efforts. Mr. Mercanti wanted to make a presentation before the Board of Supervisors, and one of my recommendations to Mr. Mercanti and his committee was to wait until we have the report from Lynn, from our harbor director, and then, at that time, they could submit their cards and to share their information or their concerns. And normally, they get five minutes. If we have too many requests, you can probably cut it to three minutes, but they can make their presentation at that time. And he, again, wants to make that presentation to share their concerns. One of the things that is happening over Seabridge is that they have a lot of fees, HOA fees, they have other fees that are very costly to them, and they also have concerns also with the harbor patrol, and they want information on that. My belief is that, once we get the report from Lynn, they can come back and make their request, that we can then consider those items that they're requesting. One of the things that I also, that they're asking is that they want the ability to be in the ground floor of whatever's gonna be developed there at the harbor. They wanna have input on what should go into the harbor and so forth. One of the things that I've said, and I've always said in the past, that the community should have that input, the stakeholders should have the input into what goes into the harbor. And I know the harbor belongs to the entire county, but those people are gonna be affected directly. So one of the things that I've mentioned to them is that, once a development comes in, or the proposed development comes in, that we'll have town hall meetings, we'll have meetings at the neighborhood consults and so forth, to share what is being proposed, and then they can give their input. And apparently, they believe that they should be in the ground floor of what's gonna be developed, and we are, they are gonna be in the ground floor, because I know that Tom's gonna bring that to them, and this is where we're at. So he wanted to make a presentation prior to having the presentation by Lynn. My belief is that possibly, they should make the recommendation to the Oxnard City Council, because I know the city council set up the AHHA committee, then the city council can bring their recommendations to the Board of Supervisors. That would be my recommendation, I'm just sharing upfront. But I do believe that the residents should have input, and they should have a say-so in the respect, Mr. Mike Mercanti, for his efforts, and all the committee for that committee that was put together, so they can be part of the process. So I just kinda wanted, this is very, very general, there's other things that are happening in the process, but I just wanna share with the public that, yes, we do want their input, and yes, we want the public to participate, but we're not there yet until I believe we get the report from our director and from our developers.
Mr. Telefson?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Chairman--
Only public speaker card we have.
I'm sorry?
You're the only-- You're the only public speaker card we have, so I'm calling you up now here.
And one more.
Well, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors, nice to be here again. Mr. Powers, it's nice to be here again before you. I think we're very excited about getting going on this project, and Supervisor Zaragoza, I wanna confirm to you that it is our intent to reach out to the community and obtain feedback input, information on what they'd like to see and what our proposal is to put there, and to discuss it in a manner where hopefully, we can reach a consensus on what we are proposing to put there fits with what they're looking to see there. So we will go through that effort and process.
One of the things, Mr. Chair, that we did also, we set up, as I mentioned before, we set up a link in my website--
Right, right. We have to explore how to do that and getting that done, technology--
We'll hopefully get some more information on that, too.
But we are ready to move forward. As you're aware, we are already underway with the exclusive right to negotiate on Fisherman's Wharf and the X3 sites, and we had a 30-day window to meet certain obligations, which we have done so far, and we are now in the process of meeting the rest of the obligations under the exclusive right to negotiate. And we're anxious to get going with this one as well, to get the clock moving and to start our due diligence site investigations, to know what we can build there and to propose, we're in the process of hiring architects on one, we'd like to hire architects on the other in our team. So we were, any questions that I can answer for you, happy to do, but we would be, like to get going today.
Just my recommendation is that we do include all the, as you mentioned before, all the residents and the stakeholders by having those town hall meetings, probably at the neighborhood consults. They have, in the city of Oxnard, they have neighborhood consults--
Right, right, yes.
And also, they have what they call the INCF, the neighborhood, where all the different neighborhoods' chairs meet, and--
Yep. Lynn Krieger has mentioned that to us, and we're waiting to get that process going.
Thank you.
We have a second card that's come in, and the second speaker is David Driner. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. David Driner with Brighton Management, representing Brighton Management in this, and we've been working with Lynn, and I think it was mentioned that we just took over the management and the ownership of the Hampton Inn right next to it, and we, as well, want to involve all the stakeholders. In fact, our, one of our vice presidents lives in that part of the Oxnard Seaport area, so he's very, we're all very interested in working with that part of the development, but also see the potential, and we've started to talk to some other hotel development companies to develop that spot.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. One of the things, and I wanna thank you so much for that. One of the things that I wanna remind our residents, you know, that we have done a lot over at the harbor, you know, we have the Maritime Museum, we have the Boating Center that we set up, we're working with the, with Toppers, we're, of course, looking also at the redevelopment of Fisherman's Wharf. We just opened up the boat launching ramp. We're finishing up the lifeguard stationed over in Silver Strand, and Supervisor Long and I are looking into opening up Lungenale for additional parking. We're looking at additional 40 to 50 parkings there, so we have done quite a bit over at the harbor, and I think it's important that the public understand that, that we are working on the harbor, and it's beginning to revitalize that whole section there, so I think it's important. We have Sea Fresh, and we have Morcaca, I think is what it is, that Brazilian restaurant, so we have a lot of good things happening in the harbor, and I just wanna have the community to help us with those new efforts that we're, that we're looking at over at the peninsula and Fisherman's Wharf.
We did get one more speaker card, they keep coming in, and Ms. Tuttle. And Ms. Tuttle, I wanna make you aware, in case you're speaking on another item and you decided to speak on this one, too, you're limited to a total of five minutes for your comments, so whatever use here, you won't have available for your other--
I'll be quick, on this one. I live down in Oxnard Shores, and this is very, very important to the city of Oxnard, what you do there. We have so many problems, and one of them is traffic and parking, so somebody has to take that into consideration. And then also, as Supervisor Zaragoza said, the community does want to be involved, and the high, high costs of river ridge. I believe that the fees are $90,000 a year--
Seabridge.
Seabridge, are $90,000 a year, and the people are beginning to come to meetings in bulk. So please be careful with what you approve for us. Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, you know, Seabridge is in the city of Oxnard, and the city council is one that is responsible for those fees, you know, and HOAs and so.
Could I ask you a couple of questions? Ms. Krieger, I think this is really positive. It's great to see proposed investments in the harbor, and it's nice to see that occurring. As I understand it, the concept is to combine both when we go to the Coastal Commission as one project? Is that right?
Yes.
And I'm just wondering if-- And I'm just wondering if that will complicate things or actually streamline things?
Well, that's largely dependent on the response of the commission. But the staff, at this point, who, you know, we've worked together closely with them for years, prefers bundling this project, because they see the advantages of the public improvements all coming in one package. And we have to deal with Marina parking for the adjacent Marina, that's easier to do if it's done in one package.
Have we ever done anything like that, had two different leaseholds going in at the same time?
Yeah, I believe so. It's not uncommon to have multiple amendments. They may split it into two amendments and hear them at the same time, just process them together.
And, you know, I also like in here that it's guaranteed we're going to have several public meetings in which the public will be able to give feedback for this. And the county isn't financially obligated in SEI. I know the lessees are, but we aren't. Is that correct?
That's correct. Well, and in response to your public comment idea, the lessees are also looking now to assist us with having an electronic form of providing news out to the public, in addition to what we might have on our own website. And so, they're meeting later this afternoon to talk about that as well. So, expanding public input.
Hearing your recital of all the things that we've done at the harbor recently, it's really nice to see the investment going in there and improving the areas. So, congratulations for that work, too.
Thank you so much. And I want to share in my report that my daughter was here, hadn't been here for quite a while, from Fort Worth. Not because of my daughter, she might be maybe on my side, but she just mentioned to me how beautiful the harbor is, because, you know, she had her reunion there, Santa Clara reunion at the, what's the name of the, the Bell?
Scarlet Bell.
The Scarlet Bell. And she loved it. She says, how beautiful it is here in Oxnard. She hadn't been to Oxnard in quite a while, you know. She lives in Fort Worth now. But anyway, getting a lot of good compliments.
Have her write a letter to Governor Perry, telling her about how attractive this is from Fort Worth.
Down in Fort Worth. Thank you, anyway.
Okay. We have item twenty-three in front of us now, at this point in time.
Make a motion.
It's been moved and seconded. We're ready to vote.
And I do want Mr. Mercanti to know and his group that we are invited to come and speak to the board. Thank you.
Great. And that item passes. And we now have, we're now at our public comment part of the agenda. And we have one speaker, Inez Tuttle. Inez Tuttle, morning again.
Good morning again, and thank you for letting me speak. There was a large article on our librarian, director, and secretary to the board retiring. And I'd like to read a little bit from it, if I may. And this would be on the Star, Wednesday Star, July thirtieth, 2014. And it would be the first page of B section. And her name is Jane Myers. And the part I'm going to read is, says, "Myers' main endeavor has been trying to spread the word about the fourteen thousand square foot library tucked away on one side of the Ventura County Hall of Justice. Not enough people know about it," she said, "even though the library's existed for a hundred and twenty-three years. It's what I've been trying to tell people for the last nineteen years." Oh, yeah, she's been there nineteen years. Then I'm going to go to page two B, where it talks about the library. It was founded in eighteen ninety-one. The Law Library was established to ensure both parties in a case had equal access to legal information they needed to represent themselves or their clients. "That mission holds true today," Myers said, "although the emphasis has been shifted," this is amazing, "to legal resources for the public at large. The library is its own entity governed by a volunteer board of county and court officials and funded largely from a portion of civil court filing fees. That revenue stream has been a source of frustration for almost all of Myers' tenure, and however forcing her to slowly cut back on staff, materials, and library hours. A stark result of that budgetary strain will accompany Myers' departure. Once she leaves, staffing levels will drop to three full-time and one part-time employee, prompting the library to close on Saturdays for the first time. 'I'm very sad,' she says. 'I wanted all these years to keep Saturday, but economically, for the last three years, three years, we have been running on reserves, and nothing was done. And nobody cut the employee benefit packages.' She had an opportunity here to talk about the friends of the library that is being started, that they're planning to have golf. I don't know anything about golf, but whatever golf people do, they're planning to do that. But she had an opportunity to speak here. This library supported her for nineteen years and will support her into retirement. And she said nothing to help the library. And I find that's been the problem. So, thank you."
Thank you for your testimony, Ms. Tuttle. We have no other public speakers, so we will now turn to our board comments. Supervisor Sarah Goza.
Yes, I'd like to adjourn and remember those folks on this list. And as I mentioned, I spent, you know, a couple of four or five days with my daughter here from Fort Worth. And she's a runner, she likes to run, you know, and she runs different marathons and so forth. She came here to, for her class reunion from Santa Clara High School. And in the process, she likes to get into the computer, and she saw this 5K run, the Kensington Foundation run here in Ventura. And she ran the 5K. And she came in third. She's going to hate me for saying what I'm going to say right now. She probably would have come in second, but she fell in the process as she was running it. She hit one of those bumps or humps or whatever it is in the street. But she had a great time. And then, my other granddaughter, she's here, she's a junior over at San Francisco State, she ran with her, too. She's only nineteen years old, and she came in sixth in her age, Division Two. And my understanding is, there's probably about a hundred-plus 5K runners, you know, for that Kensington Foundation here in Ventura. So, she says, Dad, I want to give to the foundation, I want to give to Ventura County, because I was born here, even though she's been gone for twenty-two years, you know. But anyway, that's all I have to report. She had a great time.
Good. Thank you. Any adjourned memories?
Yes, I have this adjourned memory.
Supervisor Foy.
I wanted to adjourn a memory of people on this list, too. And also, I just wanted to thank the Sheriff's Department out in Moore Park, you know, they get, people get these numerous calls on, you know, scams, trying to be swindled and stuff, and people doing that. And just want to, the Moore Park Police Department, the Sheriff's Department, you know, set up a hotline for them to do this, and, you know, all the internet scams. And I just think it's just a proactive way the residents can have the opportunity to call and get investigators talking to them. And I think it's just an opportunity to try to stop some of the stuff that continues to keep going on and on, and people get gullible to these things. But I just want to thank them for being proactive on that piece of it. And those are my comments for today. Thanks.
Supervisor Long.
Yes, thank you. I don't have adjourned memory. And I would just like to mention, since this is our last meeting until September, that the Camrio Wings Association and the Camrio Air Show will take place on August twenty-third and twenty-fourth. It features Chuck Aaron and the Red Bull Aerobatic Helicopter, and many, many other parts of the show. It's one of the biggest events in that area, as far as thousands of people who turn out for it, and what a great showcase it is for our, for the airport and for the county's property and the airport that's run. And it's a great, the association stepped forward and is running that air show, and they've had great success with it. So, if you get a chance, you have, you know, folks in town want to go see a great air show, go to the Camrio Air Show, August twenty-third and twenty-fourth. That's my comments.
Supervisor Parks.
And the Ventura County Fair, which I was able to go to last weekend.
Which I was there, yes.
It was a lot of fun. I was also able to attend a ribbon cutting out in Supervisor Foy's district of the Arroyo Simi Greenway, their Phase One, and just looking at how we can use our watershed protection district flood control channels to also use them for bicycling and pedestrians. It's great to see the success there. It was a collaboration of their city and the park district, and also the schools, to some extent, too. And to also helps reduce greenhouse gas emissions, give people recreation, but also makes it safer for kids, for example, going to schools. Hope we can get something like that in more areas in the county, looking at the one along Cal State Channel Islands, if we can get people off the road on their bicycles, so it'd be safer for cyclists. And also, looking at a small area in Newberry Park for that, too. Also, was able to attend with our CEO, Ride On, it's a therapeutic horsemanship course, where it helps people with disabilities from our county board recently approved funds for veterans with PTSD to be able to participate in programs there. And it's nice to see the good work they're doing with, particularly children, too, with disabilities, both physical and mental. So, that's nice to see the program in action. And I also attended the pension hearing yesterday and just found that what we have before us is just, the petition was petitioning, something that really needs to be done at the state level when it comes to the type of retirement system we have here in the county. And I think the judge made that pretty clear. And I'd ask that we also close in honor of the people on this list. And just one call out, the Thousand Oaks Acorn, and maybe other Camrio Acorn, had a nice article about one of our firefighters, a young woman who just, you know, always wanted to be a firefighter all her life and is out at the Lake Sherwood Fire Station now. And just nice to see women in these types of roles and also getting highlighted. So, that's neat to see.
Thank you. It's been a healthy week in Ventura County. Supervisor Long didn't have any adjourned memories, and I don't have any adjourned memories also, so.
I'm going to add one.
Oh, Supervisor Long is now going to add one. So, but before we go to that, I'll, well, go ahead. Why don't you do your adjourned memory?
Well, and Supervisor Parks, I think we shared this constituent, Leo Venoni. He is listed as in SOMAS, I always felt he was Camrio, but I didn't get a chance to talk to you about Leo. When you talked about the fair, in nineteen fifty-six, Leo and a group of four-age leaders established Uncle Leo's Barn, and it's become a fair tradition ever since then. It's been, I've taken my child through it and many children through it. He's just, his family is just very much a part of our agricultural history and married to his wife for sixty-nine years, raised many children, but raised many children in our county just through the experience they were able to have with Uncle Leo's barnyard at the fair. And just right up till last year, I saw him. So, it's just quite a tradition with the fair, and was honored by the fair as a most, one of their MVPs a few years back by the Western State Fair and Exposition Association, blue ribbon. So, just a nice, nice family. Thank you.
Thank you for pointing that out. The other thing I'd note is that the newspaper had some coverage of the no-kill efforts being made here in Ventura County recently. And it's just great to see that they've made it now through half of the year, and that it looks like the summer that we thought was going to be, you know, the most difficult time, they're still able to maintain the no-kill. So, we're halfway through. If we can make it through the whole year, I think we need to have a real celebration. We will be the only large county in California to achieve no-kill. And I think it's a remarkable effort by a bunch of remarkable people, and we really, hopefully, we'll get to celebrate that at the end of the year. So, I want to congratulate them for getting through this tough summer part, and I hope that we can maintain through the second half of the summer, the no-kill level that we're at. Also, we had the opportunity, Supervisor Long and I both attended. Celeste Weingarten was honored by the Women's Political Caucus, and she's just been a remarkable woman in Ventura County, and you realized how remarkable it was, as you heard the people speak, particularly, should we all be so lucky to have the same thing said to us by our daughters and spouses at an event like that. And they did it very well. And if I could call up a PowerPoint, I know that you'd be missing me for five weeks if you didn't get to have a little PowerPoint. So, I know for Supervisor Foy's sake, I created this PowerPoint, and it's all good news this time here. So, as soon as it comes up, and that is, that Ventura County is late with their PowerPoints. Ventura County is, drum roll, the safest place to swim on the California coast. And next slide, if I could, this was a piece of information that was sent to us by the National Park. Next slide, or do I click it myself here? I suppose. There we go. Whoop, I just messed up. There we go. If you look on this slide, the red is the highest risk for shark attacks in California. Blue is moderate, green is good. But if you have no color, there's only one county on that chart. See it? Ventura County, no shark attacks, right? So, as we go through the next two hot months, tell people, if you want to, if you want to swim safe, you come to Ventura County to avoid those shark attacks. The kids in my house really like, the five-year-old really liked this chart when I showed it to him, right? In terms of getting into the water. So, anyway, on that piece of good news, I'd like to, yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to ask us to go into closed session for a few minutes before we get to our nine-thirty time certain. I think we have, the question is whether we can have a conversation in closed session. Fact is, I forgot to ask that question, whether we can do that.
Yes, we internally can.
Yeah, all right, great. All right. So, we'll go ahead and go into closed session, have a quick conversation, come back out for our nine-thirty time certain. Appreciate everybody's patience with that, and we should be out pretty promptly. I wish my classroom would have quieted down that much when I walked in, right? I'd like to call this board meeting back into session. Our apologies, we're running behind. We'll try to move as promptly as we can through these items. Our first nine-thirty time certain item is item forty, public hearing regarding the adoption of Second Amendment of the Market-Based Adjustment. Good morning, Tobin.
Good morning, Chair Bennett, members of the board, CEO Mike Powers. For the record, Tobin Coshill, County Labor Relations Manager, CEO Labor Relations Office. The item we have before your board today is a recommendation to commence public hearing on the adoption of the Second Amendment to the labor agreement between the County of Ventura and SEIU Local 721. Second recommendation for your board to waive the second hearing that's required by your personal rules and regulations. your personal rules and regulations. And finally, a third recommendation for your board to adopt the amendment at the conclusion of today's hearing.
Are you going to do the PowerPoint on both items here as they're both attached together?
No, I will be presenting the item for SEIU and then Ms. Kelly Shirk will be presenting the item for the management.
Great, thank you.
So there's currently a three-year deal between the County of Ventura and SEIU 721 that covers approximately 4,500 county employees. This agreement provides for salary increases, including benefits of 6.16% over the three-year agreement. The agreement also provided for the employees to begin paying 50/50%, sorry, 50% or 50/50 cost-sharing arrangement in retirement contributions. This is in addition to the 3% that SEIU employees agreed to pay into their retirement plan back in June of 2010. The last time that SEIU received any form of salary increase that is above and beyond the merit system 5% was in September of 2009. Because of the five-year lag between now and the last time there was a salary increase, several job titles represented by SEIU fell significantly below the labor market, both for the private sector and public sector employers. So that has impacted our recruitment and retention. For instance, if we look at the total compensation study for the water and wastewater job titles, this is a topic that was discussed a great length during negotiations with SEIU back in 2013. The water and wastewater classification was found to be negative 29% below the market median. As part of the agreement with SEIU, the County of Ventura completed a total compensation study. This is part of Article 5, Section 502B of the MOA, to determine the eligibility for SEIU-represented employees for a 1% market-based adjustment. So if an employee was found to be not above 10% of market, they would be eligible for a 1% salary increase. The market survey included, as you can see, the seven southern counties that we consider our labor market, including Kern, LA, Orange County, Riverside, San Bernardino, the rest are up on the slide, as well as the surrounding jurisdictions such as Santa Barbara, Ventura, Thousand Oaks, and so forth. The compensation elements are surveyed in addition to being based pay, as name implies. Total compensation includes other items such as educational incentive, employer-paid healthcare benefits, paid leave time, and employer-paid retirement contributions for the county pension plan. When the SEIU MBA was completed, the county executive staff reviewed the findings of the study and we determined that there were several SEIU and management classifications, because we did a similar study for management, several classifications that were significantly below the market median. Therefore, the county executive staff has recommended that an additional market-based adjustment above and beyond what the 1% is provided for in the current agreement be provided to the SEIU members. The methodology to determine eligibility for the additional market-based adjustments is, as you see there, the classification must be at least 11% behind the market median to qualify. The goal of the methodology is to get the employees of the job classifications at 95% of market. We developed a formula where if the 95% of market is $2,000 or less, they would be at 95% of market, the pay would be set 95% of market for those job titles. If the 95% of market exceeded the fixed $2,000 amount, then those job classifications would get an additional market-based adjustment of 42% of whatever the original 95% of market. So our office met with a very skillful and experienced SEIU negotiator known as Pam Fair. We've had quite a few meetings. And county staff has shared these findings and the methodology that we have employed to determine these market-based adjustments. SEIU and the SEIU Bargaining Committee agreed with our presentation and our findings. Overall, the MBA average increase for a typical MBA, sorry, SEIU-represented employee is 3.56% over the three years. The minimum would be 1%. That 1% would be recommended to be implemented in one year. Anything over three would be implemented phased in over three years with a maximum adjustment over the three years of 9%. So a minimum of one, maximum of nine, average being 3.56 over the three years. The, of the SEIU members that were covered by this agreement, about 4,500, approximately 1,811, I guess that's not approximate, is it? That's pretty, it's 1,811. SEIU employees or 41% of SEIU-represented employees will be eligible for an increase based on this methodology. The total cost of this county-wide is $4.5 million. From a general fund net county cost perspective, it is $678,106. And again, these market-based adjustments would be phased in over three years. So that final cost would be at the third year or 24 months after implementation. And again, so this is our recommendation for your board and with, and I'll be available for any questions you may have.
All right. Do we have any questions from Tobin on this issue, right? All right. Our CEO is suggesting that we hear the presentation on 42 also at the same time, and then you want to make some overall comments, right? And you'll make some overall comments and then we'll vote on each one of these separately? Good morning, Ms. Shirk.
Good morning, Chair Bennett, members of the board, Mike Powers. Kelly, for the record, Kelly Shirk, County Executive Office, Human Resources.
Excuse me one second. We're going to go back and we're going to hear the presentation on 41 and 42, then we're going to go back and vote on 41, and then we'll vote on 42. Does that work for you? Or, I'm sorry, 40 and 41. Yeah, there we go. I had the numbers wrong. Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Shirk.
Okay. The letter before you today requests approval to implement the market-based adjustments for certain management confidential clerical and unrepresented other classifications that are 11% or more behind market. As you know, the county has come through difficult times without experienced layoffs and furloughs or reducing customer service to our community. With your leadership, our managers and employees have taken steps to achieve fiscal sustainability in several ways, by contributing to our retirement plan and achieving the desired goal of 50/50 cost sharing. This was accomplished well before the Public Employees Pension Reform Act, or PEPRA, timeframe. We successfully worked with our labor partners to reach this goal. Employees covered by the management resolution last received a general salary increase in December of 2008 and it was 1.47%. In June of 2010, these same employees began contributing 3% compensation earnable to their retirement plan and the last, the prior increase that managers received within 2007. Your board took action in August 2013 to grant management employees a compensation package valued at 5.64% over three years. The first increase will become effective this month. So to be eligible for the MBA, the classification must be at least 11% behind market. Of the 962 eligible management employees, 560 will receive an increase. The average increase is 4.94% and the maximum is 9% as Tobin indicated, 1% is our minimum.
May I interrupt for a moment?
Sure.
That must be at least 11% behind market.
Correct.
That's with the, with the contract that has been approved, correct?
Correct.
Already that increase that they're still 11% behind, correct?
It's with, prior to the increase. Wait, no, sorry, including the increase, yes. It's deducted in the formula.
Okay, thank you.
The amount, okay. So the total cost would be 4.5 million and the net to general fund is $678,106. Okay. I don't want to repeat what Tobin said regarding the formula, the same formula that here applies to managers as it does to the SEIU contract. So managers must also, to be eligible for this, must receive a positive performance evaluation as we have done in the past. And finally, we request your board to confirm that the CEO's salary, excuse me, to confirm that the 6% salary increase recently granted to County Council should be applied following the implementation of the 50/50 retirement cost-sharing policy.
Say that again?
That the salary increase granted to County Council should be applied following the implementation of the 50/50 cost-sharing that was done in the last paper read.
Oh.
I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do you have any questions? Mr. Powers, you have some comments?
Yes, Mr. Chair Bennett and board members, appreciate the time on this item. As you've heard, for many years, there weren't increases and with your board's support and approval, we were able to do that for our county workforce. At the same time, with your board's support, we felt we needed to step back and look at this whole countywide system and see where are our positions in terms of market. And so a very thorough, detailed, rigorous analysis was done by our HR team over the last six months, looking at hundreds and hundreds of positions and benchmarks and so forth. So that's what's brought us here to today. And I think it's important, too, that this is our county managers, but also our represented employees. This is the county family here. And again, we talk about investment. Your board's made a lot of good investments in infrastructure and technology and so forth, and this is an investment in our people, which is, of course, our greatest asset. And to maintain that institutional knowledge, those relationships, that skills and that training, and that's what our strength is here. So we appreciate that. We appreciate the excellent partners that we have in SEIU. And we also are going to be bringing back some similar adjustments with some other labor unions as well, because this is an ongoing process. We're going to continue to evaluate it as we go. With that, too, I just want to, oh, there we go, they're already up there. To give you a sense of just how extensive this process was over the last six months, this is a list of the team that's really spent many, many hours, weeks and months working on this. And of course, you see Tobin and Lisa Yoshimura, who's really a classification specialist and does a great job, along with their whole team there, Amber and Mike and John, I won't read all the names, but you can see them. It took quite a few people to get us here today, so I appreciate that and appreciate all the great work of our county workforce. So happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Let me make a comment. I do thank CEO's office, working hard to get this done. I know Mike and I have talked about this a long time, is trying to find a way to get, move people up and do this, and people say it's going to cost some money. There's no question it is. But this money is coming from the hard work these people did to save that. We've seen that over the years, how much they've done through the savings to pay for themselves. And I'm just glad to see that we're able to move this to a level that we can get some going. I mean, we'd love to see some higher leadership levels get even higher in there, but I'm glad to see that some of the middle tiers, lower tiers are getting close to that 95%. I know it's always been a goal, 95 to 105, and I know, Ms. Powers, under your leadership, you're trying to make that happen and this board is trying to come along with that. So that's tremendous that we're doing it. And I like the idea that we're treating everybody equal. Doesn't matter if your management's, SEIU, everybody's in here, it's together. So I appreciate that. So good, good numbers that we're trying to accomplish here. Thanks.
I'd just like to personally, Mr. Powers mentioned about all the people that have worked hard on this from the auditor's office, the CEO's office. I know they ran so many iterations of this as we were trying to get this worked out in terms of the formula, et cetera, that it was a tremendous amount of man-hours. I think it's really important activity and it's, in some ways, it's a culmination of all the work that they've done to sort of work with the board on our closed session negotiations, labor negotiations, et cetera. So a genuine sincere thank you to everybody, Tobin and Catherine and everybody else that's, whose names show up there. So thank you very much as we go forward. Mr. Powers.
Also want to thank the team and thank CEO's office and the senior negotiation team. In the back room in closed session, we have a book that's probably about maybe a foot or so, that thick, believe it or not. But one of the things that we were looking at is how can we reward our team, our workers and kind of bring them up to par with other agencies and so forth? And I just want to thank our team for the good work they've done and all the employees for the contribution that you've done. I think we probably have the best workforce in all of California, but I just want to thank all of the workers that are here, you know, the public safety employees, SEIU employees, our firefighters and all of you for helping us out. I want to thank you and thank you, Michael, for your good job.
Supervisor Parks.
I also, you know, realize we do have some employees out there, you know, 20, 30, 40% out of the market range. And while this is just a maximum increase of 9% over three years, we, you know, it starts that process of getting that. So for example, the City of Thousand Oaks doesn't keep taking our engineers and VRSD and so I know that we definitely want to make sure that our employees are paid what they are worth. And I think this does that and does it in a way that we can afford.
Yeah, also thanks to the team, all the folks up there. And the board has spent many, many hours on this in trying to do what we can to be as fair and balanced and moving forward. The employees who are so far out of market and to do so in a range that we can afford to do so, this information and all of the work that's been done now sets a good foundation for us going forward. And it is public service work. It is public service work. When you come to work for the county, to say that you're going to remain competitive in the private sector, most times you're not. And that's a challenge for us and a challenge for the taxpayers of the county, because we do want and do have quality employees and very skilled and dedicated employees. And that's what we're paying for and that's what we should always strive to pay as well as we can, as well as we can afford. But at the end of the day, you're here because you enjoy the work you're doing. You enjoy that you are, most times, I would say, get to interact with the public and get to know that you're making a difference in your community with the work you do. And that's, that's the value added that all employees who work in the county or work in, I think, in government have to feel best in them, in their, in their careers and what they do. So I appreciate the good work. I think this moves us forward and I think it, I would hope that it's a good sign that we do value our employees.
Thank you. We're ready for a motion. I know all the people for the other items are ready for us to move on also.
We're doing a motion on 40?
It's been moved and seconded on item.
This is 40 or 41?
40, item 40 right now.
40.
Wait a minute, we didn't vote on 40 yet, right?
40 first. Let's do 40 first. Yeah, withdraw, yeah. Better change it to 40.
Are we ready now? Tell us when you're, when you want us to vote.
Are we starting all over here?
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second in front of us here. We're ready to vote. Item 40. And that motion passes. We're now ready to vote on item 41.
On 41, I'd like to see if we can break out the elected separately and/or pull that and discuss that later if you guys would agree with that. Anybody along with that?
I'm okay withholding it, that part. And go ahead and approve the rest then.
Yeah, well, just do the rest if they're available and hold the elected till later. Bring that back.
Bring that back when?
I would say bring it back within 30 days. Or, I mean, 40, 45 days if we can come back. Give us time over our break.
So are you making a motion to do that?
Yeah, well, I guess if I can during this or part of, I just want to pull it out and discuss that separately, or I mean, relook at that separately instead of having a discussion here about it. Yeah, how about if we make a motion to do that?
I don't understand what you're doing there. Are you making a motion to pull it off the vote?
If I can make a motion while this is up.
Do you want to have a discussion?
Yeah, okay. I want to, I want to, I'd like to make a motion that we bring that back. Let's say 60 days, since we have our, we're going to be gone for 30 days anyway. Within 60 days, we bring back that, the elected separately. I'm making a motion for that.
I'm not going to support.
Huh? Well, I'm going to prove this separate, but it sounds like we make the motion first to do that.
You make a motion to approve the recommendation except for the elected.
Except, and then we'll make a motion separate, okay.
Which would come back in 60 days. So that's the motion and if there's a second.
Okay.
It can be debated. If there's no second, then it dies.
Okay. So that would be my motion to do that. So that would be my motion to do that, approve this and bring the other one back in 60 days.
And I'll speak against that motion. I just, I think we've had enormous amount of conversation about this. I think we're ready to do this at this point in time, so I will not be supporting that. And that motion's defeated three to two. We're now ready for a motion on staff recommended action. Says our computer.
And for the record, this does not include supervisors.
That's right. No supervisors. All right, we're ready to vote on the recommended action.
I don't really want to make this vote because I know there's problems with the elected situations, of people being way out and does other things, but the opportunity to bring something else back. But I don't want to punish all the managers who have agreed to this, so, all right. I'm going to go along with that for now.
So that motion passes unanimously and... Rochelle...and Rochelle got a baptism by fire her first day down here, and we really threw it at her there, right? All right. All righty. We're at 10 o'clock, 10 o'clock time certain, and our apologies for being late. And this is resolution proclaiming National Forensic Science Week here, and we have Renee Artman, Forensic Services Bureau Manager. And Renee, if you could come down, and I know we have some other people out here in the audience in support of this, all right? I see the sheriff out there certainly supporting the crime lab. Appreciate that. All right, here we go. Because we're late, we're going to go ahead and go on if people, as are going out, if they could be...oh, great, you got them all down here, right? You know, just keep those people in the...just keep spilling out to the side so some people aren't in the aisle there. Just keep coming around here, filling it up.
Yes, I really wanted them to be here because this is all about those people.
We have a relatively short resolution, so I'm going to read that. We normally don't do that, but this is a resolution, the Board of Supervisors proclaiming National Forensic Science Week, August 11th through the 17th. Whereas forensic science is a vital public service, and access to quality forensic analysis dramatically improves the investigation of criminal activity, leading to the exoneration of the innocent and the prosecution of the guilty. And forensic science plays a critical role in public outreach and crime prevention and is evolving in its role as an important member of the criminal justice community. And crime scene investigators, forensic examiners, and forensic scientists provide unbiased, accurate, and reliable analysis of evidence recovered from across the nation. And numerous professional organizations have recognized August 11th through 17th as National Forensic Science Week. Individuals all across the country will celebrate this event and the dedicated professionals it honors. And the hardworking people of our forensic science organization deserve universal regard and appreciation for their commitment to the proper scientific investigation for the cause of justice. Now therefore be resolved, the Board of Supervisors proclaims the week of August 11th through 17th, 2014, as Forensic Science Week in Ventura County. We really appreciate that, so there is a level of professionalism that is expected of people who have other people's lives literally in your hands in terms of how well you do the work, in terms of their innocence or their guilt, and we really appreciate your professionalism. So I'd like to turn that over to you for some comments about your staff.
And I would like to take a moment to say thank you for supporting this very important event for us. The National Forensic Science Week was established in 2013, and it was decision made by several professional organizations across the nation in order to recognize the work done not only by scientists, by technical professionals, but also by entire judicial system, including our law enforcement personnel and our DA office and prosecutors. And we all know that we live in Ventura County, which we all love, and it's a very safe county, one of the safest in the nation. And in fact, the crime rate in Calif...it's the lowest crime rate in California. And quite often, we take this for granted. We think that that's the way it's supposed to be, but actually, that is because of many, many people working together, and that including your board, your leadership, your ongoing support to us, to all law enforcement employees. Because of your smart financial decisions, we are able to perform those high-quality services. I wanted to recognize our wonderful law enforcement employees. They protect us day and night, around the clock. And our scientists that are working, dedicating their science, their knowledge, and application to the law to help solve all the cases. And we all have one mutual goal. We want to protect innocents. We want to find guilty ones and have them, the DA office, the prosecutors, to be able to prosecute and solve those criminal cases. And that is why this is the time for me and for everyone to express my thank you to all those hardworking people. They're really dedicated, and they really deserve this recognition. This is...we said to presidents last year, and I would like to make sure that this will continue for years to come. I really thank you very much to all of you, and thank you, all of you guys, for everything you have done.
And to make it easiest for us to get all of you in the picture, we're going to have you come all swing around this way, and we'll shoot the picture that way. We'll have the board members stand up, so if you'll come around.
Mr. Chair... Mr. Chair, I want to thank Renee. I want to thank you and your staff for an excellent work that you do. You know, if you have not taken the tour over to your lab, to the people that are listening, you should, because you're doing an excellent, excellent job with your scientists, your technicians, and all your workers. Thank you so much for an excellent, excellent work.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
No question. There's no question, you've got great, great, great people working with you, but also a great leader, so.
Yeah, and you do such vital work. It's so important. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Renee.
Thank you.
All right, our next presentation is Supervisor Parks.
Okay. So this is a recommendation to receive and file a presentation by the Classical Concert Chamber Orchestra, and I believe we have John Hester here. Mr. Hester, if you'd like to come down to the podium, he's the project director. And the Classical Concert Chamber Orchestra is going to hold two free concerts to benefit the Caneo Valley Mill Program. And it's going to be on both Friday and Saturday, August 22nd and 23rd at 7:00 PM. I guess Friday it's at 8:00 PM and Saturday at 7:00 PM at St. Patrick's Episcopal Church in Thousand Oaks. The Caneo Valley Mill Program is an essential part of our helping services in the Caneo Valley. It provides with the help of Lutheran Social Services and Emergency Support Services. They provide residents of East County and particularly Caneo Valley with a mill and shelter throughout the year, particularly the mills and coordinating with the different churches. They have seven different churches, I believe, that go ahead and provide food. The congregations all bring food. I know we've done that with my family, too, and going to be able to bring people who are homeless and on the streets, a nice, warm, and delicious homemade meal. They also provide the winter shelter program, which allows our homeless residents to have a warm, safe place to sleep during the cold winter months, and that's between December and the end of March at the same churches. And St. Patrick's is one of the host churches, and they open their doors to families in poverty, as well as the homeless population in our community. And Lutheran Social Services has also started the Circles Initiative, a community program. It's overseen by Lutheran Social Services, much like the Mill and Shelter Program, works to help families get through poverty and really mentor them. They're paired with several different community members called allies, and they meet weekly to support the family and learn how to transition out of poverty. I'm just...was delighted to hear that the chamber has decided to have these free concerts with these incredibly gifted professional musicians and have those concerts and then give the proceeds to the shelters. So invited Mr. Hester here. I had hoped that we'd have a little performance, but I know our time is short and it's hard to get people here, but thank you for what you're doing. I just wanted to give attention to the free concerts and to also provide our thanks to the Board of Supervisors for what you're doing.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you for asking me to come, Supervisor Parks. I very much appreciate it. I come here representing, of course, the Classical Concert Chamber Orchestra and our founder and owner and music director and violin soloist, Mr. Ashot Tigranian. He founded the Classical Concert Chamber Orchestra in 2007, and we are an international touring group. In fact, the group right now just finished a tour in Poland and recording sessions there. And Mr. Tigranian sends his apologies and his thanks for inviting. He's actually taking care of business in Paris right now. So we have many, many tours coming up, and in the pack that I gave you, I believe there's a listing of our next tour in Italy that's coming up very shortly. But I just wanted to briefly tell you about our group and why we're doing this. Mr. Tigranian grew up in Moscow, Russia. He went to the Moscow Conservatory and got his training there, which is one of the best in the world. During the Reagan era, he fled the Soviet Union under duress, having left a solo career there, and made his way to America, and came here with practically nothing. And through business acumen, was able to become successful. And he very much appreciates the States and what he's been able to do. And part of the organization of this orchestra, part of the purpose of it, is to give back to music, both to the communities and also to the world. And part of what he saw as something that was disappearing was a Russian school of playing, a Russian tradition of playing, that was...Yasha Haifetz, some of these large names that have disappeared in our consciousness. But anyways, he would...his purpose is to bring that to the world, and part of the vision of the group is to assist in projects like this. And Mr. Tigranian lives in Thousand Oaks. He's lived in, well, actually, Westlake Village for many years. This is where we're founded, and so we're very happy to be able to help out the community and provide these concerts for those in need. So thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. It is a very worthy cause that you're doing it for, and then we'll extend the invitation to you in the future, when available, to come play for us.
Oh, thank you. And I apologize, the musicians just got off the plane, and some of them are all over the world.
Right, and I know, and this is our last meeting in August, so this was the last meeting we could do before you have that concert, but it is something for the community to attend at St. Patrick's Church in Thousand Oaks on Friday, August 22nd at 8:00 and 23rd at 7:00.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
This is listed as a receive and file. It's a resolution proclamation, correct? Do we need to vote? Is my question... Right, right, there we go. All right, item 44, Supervisor Aragosa.
Yes, Mr. Chair, and Supervisor, it's an honor for me to present today some teenagers that are working very diligently for the Ventura County Office of Education. So I'd like to invite Gabe Turan up to the podium and also Joseph Rodriguez and Maria Hernandez. I understand they're going to give a little presentation on some of the work they've done, an report regarding tobacco retail outlet surveys. Has to do with a LEE law. LEE law has a signage that businesses put up regarding tobacco and regarding other work that...or other laws that they should follow. And this is the team members from the Friday Night Live program that will address the Board of Supervisors today. So, Gabe, your...
Thank you very much, Supervisor Aragosa, for the recommendation and the opportunity for our young people to come and speak to you. Chairman Bennett, members of the board, and staff, thank you all very much for having us this morning, and I'll allow our young people to introduce themselves in just a second and tell you a little bit about Friday Night Live and the project that they've been working on. Friday Night Live is a youth development program. It's a statewide program, and Ventura County Office of Education oversees that in Ventura County. My name, for the record, Gabriel Turan, and I oversee that program for our county. And we've worked in partnership with the school districts and community organizations such as Cabrillo Economic Development Corporation, who is here today. And with support of Ventura County Behavioral Health Prevention Services, we were able to do projects like this that we're going to show you today. And so I'm going to go ahead and allow our young people to start their presentation.
Good morning, Board Chair Supervisor Bennett and board members and staff. I'm Sapphire Drazza.
I'm Stephanie Sivamtes.
I'm Gloria Ruiz.
First, we would like to thank you for allowing us to present our project to you. We are with a group called Friday Night Live, and our chapter is with the Peso Santa Clara Apartments in Ario. Friday Night Live is a statewide program that allows youth to make changes in their community and do positive work, like the project that we're presenting to you today. There's a LEE law...there's a state law called the LEE law that states that no more than 33% of all sale stores, also known as liquor stores, convenience stores, grocery stores, can have no more than 33% of signage covering their windows or doors. You can see in this slide, these are some of the things that the LEE law covers. And in regards to signage, there are two slides that will show you one store that is in compliance and one that is not. And this, as you can see, is a store that is in compliance, and later on you will see another one that is not.
We are here today to discuss the way those stores in Ario look, because all the signs in the windows and doors, the outsides don't look very nice or inviting, and at times we don't feel safe. When the stores are...when the windows are blocked, law enforcement and customers cannot see into the stores to see if everything's safe. Also, the stores...the store owner cannot see outside into their own parking lot. Also, many of the stores in our community are not in compliance with this law or are in compliance, only due to loopholes in the law. Loopholes in the LEE law includes any neon lights and any signage that is not actually attached to the window glass itself. The next slide shows examples of these loopholes. The store...this store is already out of compliance, but you can see it as a good example of the loopholes as well. loopholes as well. The neon signs in the top window would not be counted towards the 33%. The shelving that blocks the window would also not be counted, even though they all obstruct view into the store. Also, if the signs are attached to the shelf and not to the window glass, they are not counted towards the 33% either.
In our subcode, there are 31 off-sale stores. Within a walking distance from where we live, there are 20 off-sale stores. These are the stores we assessed today. Today, we are just focusing on the stores in El Rio. The next slide will show you the density of the 20 off-sale stores from our community. This is a map of the 20 off-sale stores in our community. The blueprint represents our apartment property where we live. We conducted a community assessment, and we went to take pictures of each store signage. Forty-three percent of the stores were not in compliance. If loopholes were not allowed, 71% of the stores would not be in compliance. As you can see in this chart, with loopholes, 57% of the stores are in compliance, but without any loopholes, 29% of the stores are in compliance. We created an informational letter and distributed to the stores that we had assessed. It included informational document from the Alcoholage Beverage Control. The letter was given to all the retail stores, not just the ones out of compliance. The next slide shows the compliance of the retails before and after delivering the information. As you can see, one store did have an improvement, removed enough signage to put them into compliance. The remaining stores had no change and one actually added more signs. We also assessed another subcode of similar size, but with different income demographics to see if there's a difference in compliance. Here are the results from that assessment. As you can see with, from the results, you can see there's a disparity in the compliance rates between our area and neighboring area, only a few miles away. However, even though the compliance rate were high in the second assessment area, there were still a large number of stores taking advantage of the loopholes and the LEE law. After we did the assessment, we had a meeting with Assistant Sheriff Gary Pentis. He was supportive because El Rio is part of the sheriff's jurisdiction. After that, we also met with Supervisor John Zaragosa, and he was also very supportive because it improves an area in his district. We presented to the Behavioral Health Advisory Board Prevention Committee and Community Transformation Grand Committee. Both presentations went well, and they were also very supportive. In our research, we found that Ventura County had an ordinance for the unincorporated areas that only allows up to 25% window coverage. This is actually more strict than the LEE law and allows for local control. We would like to ask that this existing ordinance be more consistently enforced in all areas. Not only does this affect the area's aesthetics, but it is a safety issue as well. When we saw how nice the stores in compliance looked, we feel that our community and its members deserve to live in an area like that as well. At this point, are there any questions?
Mr. Chair, I just want to thank Gabe and all the teens. I met with them before, and I remember when they first made their presentation to me, they have, you have improved 100%. I remember they were sharing with us, and they were kind of embarrassed and so forth, but I just want to thank Gabe for doing an excellent job. And it's great to see our youth participate in this type of efforts to make sure that there's proper signage in the stores, you know, and code compliance. And I know that public safety has a lot of issues with signages that are not properly put up because of individuals going into the stores. And there's a lot of pilfering, too, you know, where they go in there, and some individuals will take beer or cigarettes or whatever they shouldn't. But these teenagers right here are doing an excellent job, and they're role models for the community, and I want to thank them tremendously for that. Thank you, Gabe, for the good work that you're doing for the community, especially in El Rio and also in the South Oxtard area. So thank you so much.
I think it's really nice to see these young people developing their speaking skills, one here, but mostly, to be able to see something in your community that you don't think is right, and then to go and research and find out there's a law that covers that, and then to just ask that that law be enforced is exactly what you do to take charge of a community that you live in. The democratic process, people may agree, they may disagree, but if you don't get involved, you can't change your community. And because you've gotten involved, you're well on your way to sort of being able to do this over and over again when you see things in your community that you want to change.
Gabe, do you want to have any closing comments?
Compliment you, Supervisor Zaragosa, for bringing that here.
Thank you so much. I'm very proud of them.
Just thank you all again, Chairman Bennett and Supervisor Zaragosa, members of the board and staff. It's just really great for them to get the opportunity. They worked very hard to be able to present to you today, and they, as they had mentioned, their ultimate goal is really just to have some more equality in their areas as there is in the other areas. And we took a couple trips to different areas just to practice the assessments, and it was just really astonishing to see the differences in just the aesthetics of the different areas. And as they had mentioned in their presentation, they really hope that that's something that can come to fruition from that. And I can tell you that all of this presentation, everything, they put it all together. They came up with the language and the slides, they took pictures, they did the assessments. We just helped them get to that point. They did all of this on their own. I think they should really be commended for that.
Excellent work.
Before we leave this item, I want to point out we do have a speaker on this item, Janice Gardner. Good morning, Ms. Gardner.
Good morning, members of the board, Chairman Bennett and CEO Mike Powers. My name is Janice Gardner, and I'm the Vice Chair of the Behavioral Health Advisory Board and Chair of the Prevention Committee. I'm here to support two of your time certain agenda items. And the first is the Friday Night Live Group. Ventura County Office of Education's Friday Night Live Group of Teens, as you have just seen, has made a significant impact in the community regarding the LEE law and signage in liquor stores and mini-marts in the El Rio District. These people, these young people went over and above, which included follow-ups with the stores and sometimes at their own peril. There were some very angry store owners, right? So...
Welcome to the world of political action.
Exactly.
They're brave.
They also collected data, as you saw, to help make it an evidence-based project. I had the opportunity to have these wonderful teens give a presentation to the Prevention Committee, and as you heard, they also gave a presentation to the Advisory Board. And I just wanted to say that this is a fine example of how collaboration and commitment from our young leaders of tomorrow can make a positive impact in our community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for helping to reinforce them, Janice, with those comments, and thank you all very much. Good luck. Keep us informed, all right?
Thank you, Gabe. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next item is Healthcare Agency, item 45. Good morning, Ms. Roy.
Good morning, Chair Bennett, members of the board, Mike Powers, Melanie Roy, on behalf of the Healthcare Agency. This item requests your acceptance of a certificate of appreciation, which was presented to the Ventura County Behavioral Health Department Alcohol and Drug Programs by the Cano Valley Unified School District. And we wanted to bring this to your attention because certainly this partnership, which has served about 270 students successfully over the past couple of years, would not be possible without your support. So I'm going to turn it over to Dan Hicks briefly to give you a brief synopsis of what this program entails.
Morning, Chair Bennett, members of the board. A few years ago, we were approached by the Cano Valley Unified School District about a range of issues that are affecting young people and their families, including alcohol and drug issues, with the intent of finding out what kinds of services exist and what kinds of things might exist that we could collaborate on. And the timing couldn't have been more perfect because we had been looking at an innovative approach to student assistance programs that is really focused on keeping young people in school and is a very strength-based approach to prevention, not just preventing alcohol and drug problems, but emotional disturbance. And so we looked at Murieta, and we had an idea of what we wanted to do, and things kind of synced up with some time-limited funding that we had available to not so much fund, but invest in a prove-it project. And so earlier this year, we saw some of the fruits of that, and we know that we have here today Supervisor Jeff Barstad and Dr. Jeff Davis, who can say a little bit about how far we've come in just two years. And I'd just say that we're coming into the last year, third year, of investment, if you will, support, and it's really because of your support that we're able to do these kinds of collaborations. So I won't go deep into the project, but let me just say that it has exceeded expectations, both in terms of numbers of families and students served and in terms of outcomes. And I would like to invite Dr. Barstad and Dr. Davis up because it's really, they gave me the plaque that was yours, and I know you guys want your plaque. So let me turn it over to Dr. Davis first.
Okay. Chairperson Bennett, supervisors, staff, thank you for having us today. This plaque is a certificate of appreciation to the Ventura County Board of Supervisors for seeing the potential in and approving the grant for the Cano Valley Unified School District's Breakthrough Student Assistance Program. And we presented this, as Dan said, at one of our school board meetings, and we really wanted to present it to you personally, Dr. Barstad and I, on behalf of the entire school district, and the council coordinator of the program, Kathleen Mervin. She's out of the area today. She couldn't be here, but she wanted to express her thanks to you also. So this plaque is for all of you.
Board members, you want to go down real quick for a quick picture? Come on down. What's that?
I just wanted to make one quick comment as well. Good afternoon. I'm Jeff Barstad. I'm Superintendent Cano Valley Unified School District, and this is an example of a seed grant that really had its intended purpose. So often, I've seen in public service that we get a grant, we start a program, we do good things, the grant runs out, the program ends. In this case, you gave us an opportunity to start a very, very powerful program that's intervening in the lives of kids and families in the Cano Valley. Our board saw so much promise in it that in its second year, we began to contribute district funds on top of the grant to strengthen the program and to expand the program. Next year, our Board of Education is already committed to fully funding the program. What we found out from your generosity is this is a program we can't live without. This is a program our kids need and our community needs. So I wanted to point out to you guys that this was a great investment that you've made that will continue on for many, many more years with district funding. So thank you so much.
And we have a speaker on this, Janice Gardner, again.
My name is still Janice Gardner, and I'm still with the Behavioral Health Advisory Board. As an advisory board member, you task us with doing site visits, performing site visits on county contracted facilities. I had the opportunity of visiting the Breakthrough Program this past year, and it is a pilot program. This program gives troubled teens and their families something that they may not be able to get anywhere else, and that is hope. Hope that their children will be able to stay in school and in turn have a future. Hope that their families will be restored. We commend and congratulate the Cano Valley Unified School District for sustaining the Breakthrough Program, no easy feat in these economic times, and also Behavioral Health's Alcohol and Drug Advisory, I mean Alcohol and Drug Prevention Services, particularly the manager, Dan Hicks, who was the lead on this project, for their collaboration with the Cano Valley Unified School District in the implementation of this significant program, which has created positive outcomes for our youth and their families. Thank you.
Thanks for your volunteer services and your efforts, Ms. Gardner. Board members, you want to go down for a quick picture and receive the plaque that they've come to get? Moved and seconded. We're ready to vote. There we go. All right, now we're at item 46. That's the Resource Management Agency on the... The Simi Valley, yeah, there we go. Great.
Good morning. Good morning, Chair Bennett, members of the board, CEO Powers. I'm Michelle Gluckert-Diana of Planning Division Staff, and the item before you today is Conditional Use Permit PL-13-0132 for an outdoor training facility for the Simi Valley Police Department.
Thank you.
The site is located in Simi Valley off Highway 118 at Madera Road. It is adjacent to and east of the active face of the Simi Valley landfill. The red line on this image shows the grading limits of the active face of the landfill. The black and white dashed line shows the CUP boundary for the landfill. So all of the areas between the red line and the black and white line constitute the buffer area. This buffer area that surrounds the disposal footprint of the landfill is approximately 500 acres. Of that 500 acres, 2 acres is proposed to be removed from the buffer area to accommodate the proposed project. If the Board of Supervisors approves the requested CUP for the training facility, then the CUP for the Simi Valley landfill will be modified administratively via a permit adjustment that will be approved by the planning director. This figure shows the distance from the proposed facility to the nearest public viewing locations. Viewing Location 1 is from Highway 118, 4,150 feet. Location 2 is from the parking lot of the nearest commercial business uses, which is 21,000 feet. And Location 3 is from a public road in Big Sky Ranch, the nearest residential uses to the proposed project, and this is 6,400 feet from the proposed project site. The following photographs will demonstrate how the proposed project is not visible from any of these locations. This is Location 1 from Highway 118. Location 2 from the nearest commercial business uses. And View Location 3 from the end of the public road in Big Sky Ranch. Here's a photo of the entrance to Brea Canyon Road via View Line Drive. There's a locked gate on Brea Canyon Road that ensures that this private road is used only by those authorized to use it. This photo is taken from Brea Canyon Road, looking toward the area where the training facility is proposed. And this photo is taken from the approximate location where the rubber backstop will be constructed, looking back toward the firing line where the shade structure and the parking stalls will be. And this is the proposed parking area. The request is for the construction and operation of a training facility, which will be operated by and for the Simi Valley Police Department. The facility will be used by sworn law enforcement personnel to qualify with their firearms and for other tactical training. The proposed facility will not be open to the public. It will consist of a shooting range with a rubber backstop, a 2,600-square-foot shade structure, a 320-square-foot... structure, a 320 square foot cargo container, portable restrooms, portable lighting for evening exercises. A minimum of 12 parking spaces will be provided, and the number of users per day will vary, but will not exceed 20. The proposed training activities will take place no earlier than 7:00 a.m. and will end no later than 10:00 p.m. The site will primarily be used for daytime exercises between 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m., except approximately once per month, the facility is expected to be used for evening training exercises that would take place between 7:00 p.m. and 10:00 p.m. Access to the site is via Highway 118 at Madera Road, Madera Road to Viewline Road to Brea Canyon. And Brea Canyon Road is a private road with gated access. Here's the site plan, showing the rubber backstop, the shade structure, cargo container, and the parking areas. The shade structure is a very simple structure with a roof open on all sides. And the rubber backstop will span the entire width of the range, approximately 150 feet, and will stand about 10 to 15 feet tall. It will be composed of ground-up rubber tires, which are placed at a 45-degree angle, approximately two feet thick. And the rubber backstop will be placed against a four-inch-thick wall of concrete at a 45-degree angle along a hillside. So as bullets enter the trap, they'll remain whole. And the proposed design of the trap is intended to eliminate ricochets and also allow officers to stand very close to the backstop when shooting a firearm. The applicant submitted a few photos of a similar rubber backstop that was constructed at another facility, just to provide your board with a visual example of what this will look like and function as. So this photo shows the concrete that's placed against a hillside at a 45-degree angle. This photo shows the ground-up rubber that is then placed against the concrete. And then this photo is taken from above and behind the rubber backstop, looking back out over the shooting range. As part of the environmental review of this project, planning staff analyzed potential traffic and visual impacts, compatibility with nearby grazing activities, adjacency to landfill operations, reviewed the noise study that was prepared for the shooting range, and analyzed the project pursuant to all of the impact areas in the Ventura County Initial Study Assessment Guidelines. The only potentially significant impacts that were identified pertained to biological resources. Five mitigation measures were identified to reduce the potential impacts to plant and animal species to a less than significant level. The applicant consented to the mitigation measures, and the document was circulated for public review. Planning staff received one comment from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. CDFW raised some questions over the possible impacts to the American Badger and the Western Spadefoot Toad. So in response to those comments, the planning staff biologist worked directly with CDFW to incorporate minor changes into the mitigation measures, specifically MM-3 and MM-4. And ultimately, those changes are reflected in the draft set of conditions that is before your board today. The discussion of the modifications can be found in Attachment 9 to Exhibit 4 to the board letter, and the revised mitigation measures and conditions are included in Exhibit 5 to the board letter. CDFW supports the revised mitigation measures, as does the applicant. Since the revisions did not warrant any substantial changes, nor did they identify any significant impacts that were not already identified in the MND, the MND was not recirculated. The proposed project was evaluated in terms of all of the findings set forth in the Ventura County Non-C coastal Zoning Ordinance and all applicable general plan policies. Staff determined that all of the findings can be made, and the analysis is located in Sections C and E of the Planning Commission's staff report, prepared for this project, which is Exhibit 1 to the board letter. The Board of Supervisors is the decision maker for this CUP. However, pursuant to Ventura County Non-C coastal Zoning Ordinance Section 8111-1.2.1B, the Planning Commission must review the CUP application before the board may act on the CUP application. So at their July 3 public hearing, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to approve staff's recommendation and adopt a resolution recommending that your board grant the CUP. The hearing today was adequately noticed. A legal notice was placed in the Ventura County Star. A mailed notice was sent to property owners within a 300-foot radius of the project site. We also sent a notice to the Army Corps of Engineers, California Department of Fish and Wildlife, California Native Plant Society, and the Ventura Audubon Society. With the exception of the letter from CDFW on the MND, no other public comments have been received on this project. Therefore, staff recommends that your board take the actions stated on Page 1 of the board letter, which include to certify your review and consideration of this item, to adopt the MND, to grant the CUP subject to the conditions of approval, and to specify that the clerk of the board be the custodian of the record. This concludes staff's presentation. I'm certainly available for any questions. We also have two representatives from the city of Simi Valley who would like to speak and address your board today. We have former city manager Mike Sedell and Mayor Bob Huber. Thank you.
Board members, we have those two speakers have submitted cards. Do you have questions before those speakers come up? Mr. Sedell. Good morning.
Good morning. Chair Bennett, members of the board, Mike Sedell, retired city manager from Simi Valley, and continuing on with this project as a pro bono consultant with the city. This project has major importance to the city, as you probably know, and to the police department with the city. Exemplifying that are the number of people that are here from the city today, taking their time to be here, representing the city, from the mayor, Mayor Bob Huber, who's also going to speak briefly, council member Mike Judge, city manager Eric Levitt, the current city manager there now, police chief Mitch McCann, deputy chief John McGinnity, senior planner Lauren Fagnoli, and the senior engineer Dick Clark. As far as the project itself, your staff's done a great job working with us, and Ms. Diana did a great job just presenting it. I don't need to review the project again. We're here. I have staff here. Any questions you may have, anything we can answer, we'd be glad to do it. We would urge your support for the project, the recommendation of the Planning Commission and your staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mayor Huber. Good morning, Mayor.
Good morning. Morning, Chair Bennett and members of the board. Thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of our city and the city council. On behalf of our city council, I would like to express our support for the proposed outdoor training facility for the Simi Valley Police Department near Brea Canyon. This training facility will provide direct benefits to our officers and the opportunity for officers to conduct their firearms qualifications much closer to our community and will keep our officers close should an emergency arise, so that they can make a quick response. Currently, members of the Simi Valley Police Department travel to the eastern San Fernando Valley to complete their firearms qualification. This results in overtime costs to the city that would likely be decreased in half with the addition of a local training facility being considered by you today. Our own locally controlled facility will also allow our officers a number of training options not available to them at the facility they currently use due to cost and availability factors. At the local facility, training will include live fire, less lethal options, movement, the use of multiple weapons, drills, and the use of a partner officer. All of these training options will better prepare officers for any serenio that they may encounter in the field. This project will contribute to the safety of our officers and better prepare them for whatever they may face in the service to our community. The Simi Valley City Council encourages you to vote yes on this. It's very important to our community. Thank you for consideration and your time this morning.
Thank you for taking the time, Mayor. We have no other speakers. Supervisor Foy.
I appreciate that, and I do, this is no question, I know to the chief and to the whole department, this is a big, big deal. When you talk about how far they go, I shoot out there myself to other places, and it's a long way for them to be off, even in their voluntary time or work time to do that. So it's an opportunity, and the different things they can do, it's really good. I hope, chief, there's the opportunity for some of our sheriffs if they want to use that facility at some point. I know there's limitations, but I know how important this is to you and to your officers. And again, the quality of having our people there, when they can train and do it close to home, is a much better opportunity for us to do that, and I know it's important. And I know, but I do want to thank Waste Management, Mike Smith, Scott Tigneck, I see in the back, who runs the facility. Mike, leader of this whole thing, who donated this land, and I know part of their deal to do that. And it's a, it's a big deal to, for them to all put it together, and the county worked it out and made it, made it all come together. So it's, it's a real opportunity for the, the community out there, and what the chief needs is, I know it's important to him. Correct? Yes, sir. Yeah. So I appreciate that and hope that we can all approve this. So thank you.
We're ready for a motion in a second. Supervisor Foy, been moved and seconded. We're ready to vote. And that motion passes, and we're now at, thank you for your time, gentlemen. We're now at item 47. That's resolution honoring Jack Peebler from Supervisor Gosa.
Yes, thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I understand that Jack has some of his family here and his mother, and Jack, if he can come over, and also some of his staff is here. So I'm going to read this resolution for Jack. Where is he? He's fixing a boat or something?
I'm just seeing, we've called the item.
Maybe we could present this to his mom.
Take your break.
Sorry, he has a lot of family filing.
Lynn, are we ready?
Jack's here.
Yes.
Okay. Well, it's an honor for me to present this resolution to Jack Peebler upon his retirement from the county of Ventura with 30 years of government service. Jack has served the public of Ventura County along with visitors and guests from other areas for 30 years. And whereas Jack Peebler is an accomplished boat handler and has been instrumental in designing and construction of several harbor patrol boats, and also including Boat 5, which was built in cooperation with the County Ventura Fire Protection District. Whereas Jack was key to the development of a partnership with the county fire, including joint training and a higher level of communication among other agencies in the county, which included the city of Oxtard and also the U.S. Coast Guard. And whereas as a harbor master for more than 10 years, Jack has been provided, has provided supervision and oversight to the Harbor Patrol, the Harbor Maintenance, including after the loss of key members, providing direct supervision of the Maintenance Division in addition for an additional four years, in addition to his harbor master duties. Since 1997, Jack has hired and trained county beach lifeguards and took the lead in the professionalizing of the county's lifeguard program, achieving U.S. Guard Association certification. And whereas the request of the new director, a new director, Jack Peebler quickly started the county junior lifeguard program in 1997, which has served over 4,000 young individuals in Ventura County. Whereas immediately after the 1998 Alaskan Airlines crash, that was a real horrible crash, Jack Peebler was on the scene at the harbor, working many, many hours for three months, organizing the ferry Coast Guard personnel to the crash site, supervising maintenance workers on the daily beach watches, coordinating commercial fishermen, boaters, and members of the public, and joining the Coast Guard lieutenant. And he said to the fraternity, fraternity that nobody wanted to belong to. And thank you for really, that was a horrible crash too. Jack volunteered at many harbor events such as a parade of lights, food and wine festivals, tall ship festivals, yacht club openings, Fourth of July celebrations, developed and provided oversight for the commercial activity permit program, whereby private companies doing business in the harbor obtained permits protecting the county from liability and expense. Where Jack took part in the lead for the department on environmental issues, carrying, creating snowy pulver and least turn protection program, installing the first free bilge pump operation in Southern California, leading the clean marine program at the harbor, developing the oil recycling program, took the lead for the harbor developments in memorial bench program that started over 10 years ago. And my understanding is now there's 60 waterfront benches for the public to enjoy, to enjoy at the harbor. And also he was involved in the construction and repair maintenance of the harbor facilities, which included diligent work on many dredging projects, and always treated those facilities owned for the benefit of the taxpayers with great care, respect, and affection. This is a lull here. And of course, he was a friend for the commercial fishermen, sport fishermen, recreational boaters, harbor lessees, and also to the harbor guests. Now therefore be resolved that the Ventura County Board of Supervisors commends Jack Peebler for his unwavering dedication, generosity, and spirit of tireless commitment to our community's boating, or boaters, visitors, and friends at the harbor and the department for the past 30 years. A retirement well deserved and happy endeavors to you and your family. And I'll go down to present this. And do you want to share anything, Lynn? Or I understand that, and then we'll have Jack speak. And I understand his mother's here and also the family and most of his employees and also some of the lessees.
I'll let Jack introduce, yeah, I think there are a couple of lessees who also would like to say something. I'll let Jack introduce his family, except that Sandy, his wife, is here. That's your first big catch?
Well, I was going to actually put that on a little bit later, but...
That's okay. And, and some grandchildren, but I just want to say very briefly that for nearly 18 years now, I have come in the door, and I have trouble, and Jack's was always the first face I saw. I'd go down the hall.
Are you choked up? This is going to hurt for me.
Yeah. So it's going to be a big change. And I think almost everyone in the harbor knows you, so, because you were on a sport boat before you worked for the harbor. So he's been in the harbor actually longer than the almost 31 years that you've actually been with us. So I'm not sure very many people at all realize the depth of commitment Jack has to the facility or to the taxpayer, to saving money, which was always a big thing, and to doing a lot of the work ourselves when we can. That was a really big focus, one that we sometimes disagreed on. But we've also been through a lot of personal things together, loss of my mother, loss of your mother, loss of your dad, and a lot of very happy things like new grandchildren, new families. So I wish Jack very well and have great respect for what he's contributed to us. So thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Jack, we'd love to hear from you.
Hard to believe it's been 30 years already. I do still remember the first time I was out on patrol by myself. Sunset, November, and I was thinking, wow, I can't believe you guys are going to pay me to do this. It's been an amazing career. Working for Lynn has been a great experience. She wears me out just watching her, how busy she is. But it's way much more than just a boss-employee relationship. I mean, she's family, she's, I mean, we're all a great crew. Hardest work in Maintenance Division I've ever seen, and I've seen a lot of them over the years in different harbors. They're non-stop, never, nothing they can't do. I know I don't have a lot of time, can't thank everybody, but I got to thank Gary. Your harbor captain. He's back there. He's been by my side the whole time. He's the one who makes me look good. He gets the guys trained. He gives sure they got the equipment. Like I said, it's been a great career. I really enjoy it. So now I get to retire and spend the rest of my days with amazingly patient, beautiful mom, wife, grandma. The point of the picture is, a couple of months ago, I was thinking, I can't golf every day. Body can't take it, so, you know. I went home, mumbled something about buying a fishing boat, and she didn't even hesitate. You know, she'd been waiting for her kitchen for a long time, but she said, I think you should. So this is a picture of the first trip I took her out to Anacapa. She'd never been out to the islands before. So what'd she do? She catches bigger fish. We get back, and it reminds me she also caught the most fish. So, you know, I feel very blessed. God's been directing me, and I feel very grateful. Thank you, guys, for an awesome opportunity and a great career. Thanks. Cheers.
Now others who want to share? Steve?
I'll make it real quick. Uh, on behalf of my dad, Fred Binger, and myself, and our family, we've been in the harbor, uh, believe it or not, longer than Jack, uh, since seventy-four, and before that a little bit more, but one thing that, that we really admire the harbor, the county for is for, is for securing the best possible people for the job, and that couldn't be truer with Jack Peebler and, and of course, his, his, uh, Lynn that he reports to. Uh, I'm also president of lessees and lessee group, all of us master lessees were extremely thankful and grateful for Jack and his service. One thing that Lynn said about Jack walking down that hall every morning and seeing him, uh, this partnership between public and private with the lessees and the, and the county is a, is a real interesting, uh, relationship that can be trying at times, but with the, uh, there was always a calm, whenever there was an issue, whether it be a parade of lights, a Fourth of July, a lessee issue, something with revetment, anything with the commercial fishing, uh, marina, uh, when Jack would show up unseen, we knew it was gonna be okay, and that, uh, he's to be commended, and, uh, and we have the utmost appreciation for, for his thirty years of service. Thank you, Jack.
Put a thieze in. Anybody else?
I have just one.
One more.
Chair Bennett, Board of Supervisors, Michael Powers. Um, I've been involved, um, in the harbor since ninety-four, but Frank Butler was one of the founding fathers of the, of the harbor, and we just sold our new marina. But on behalf of Mr. Butler, on behalf of the Butler family, we just deeply appreciate everything that Jack did. In building a marina, it's a difficult process, we were on one of the busiest thoroughfares of the marina. Whenever an issue arose, Jack was always there to work with us, work with our construction crews, to ensure the safety of the public, and the boating public, and he did a superb job, whether it be Saturday, Sunday, in the middle of the night if an issue arose, he or his team was there, and, and on behalf of lessees who have built marinas, we really appreciate what he has done for the safety of the, of the public. Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time.
Let me, I'm gonna share something else here with, uh, Jack. I need us to know, you know, we opened up the, uh, old launching ramp the other day, and you had your boat, you were the first one to launch that boat.
You didn't show my truck in the water, did you?
Is he right? And I want to give you this, uh, we have this from the Board of Supervisors, and I just wanna share with the Board of Supervisors that he was the first one to launch the, the boat there at the harbor, and, and here's a photo of that, of that boat launching ramp. And I congratulate you for that. And I know that your wife, uh, is gonna go with you to the islands and, and so forth.
Well, she made it very clear, the day she has the grandkids, I go golfing, the day she doesn't, we go fishing.
So let's take a photo, get, get all the family and all the, uh, your, your employees, and we'll take a photo, and maybe the board might want to come over too. What do you think of that? The board members want to come with? Jack, you want to say?
Thanks. Yep, I'm gonna ask a question here, because we're pretty far behind in our agenda. How many people are here for the, um, motocross, uh, item that are not part of staff? Anybody? Good. How many staff people are here for the motocross event? All right? We're gonna ask you to wait a little bit, all right? Um, the, uh, uh, I think we could, so we'll, we'll hold item forty-eight and forty-nine, and item fifty, the crop report's supposed to start at eleven-thirty. We have, um, people that have been here in the audience all morning from the healthcare agency and the human services agency. So I'm gonna start with item sixty and sixty-one, then I'm gonna do item fifty-nine, um, and I think that that'll be better for us in terms of doing that, so. Item sixty, and item sixty's an important item, I didn't want that to just get lost. Um, that's the fifty-nine new positions, um, and important positions for us, so, Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes, thank you Chair Bennett. Barry Zimmerman, the Human Services Agency, and good morning, board members and Mr. Powers. What's before you is a recommendation, a, a staffing request for the Children Family Services Department, and, um, o- over, over time, we've been to the board periodically on, on discussing the workload and, and the issues associated with the increasing volume and demand on our system over, over a period of time. We, we've taken a serious look and study at, uh, what we need to do to get us in balance so we have a proper work, um, uh, workload ratios with workers and the caseload and, and so forth, and have been working with the CEO's office. This has started, um, actually started in discussion in the budget process and has culminated to this point to discuss today. Uh, over a short period of time, a December ago or so, you know, our caseload continues to grow, and, uh, so we have about twelve-hundred-and-seventy cases as of the board letter date here, which over, uh, since twenty-eleven, that's a, almost a nearly fifty percent increase in, in the workload associated with children's services. So what's before you today is to, um, kinda take a jump in, in staffing to get us to a level in which our, our emergency response and ongoing caseload, as well as implementing the, the proper best practices model with TDM and other services, fully staffing the night service will allow us to function and to have a system that is, uh, you know, healthy in regards to responding to these critical issues. So that's, that's what's before you today. We have fortunately worked through, um, with the budget of realignment that has come down and managed those funds appropriately. As you know, as we expand beyond, uh, it's usually a fifty percent match associated with the funding that we have in children's. In this case, we were able to, uh, to work with realignment funds to lessen that match to ten percent, uh, for this request here. So if you have any questions, I know there's some others that want to make some comments regarding this recommendation.
Any questions for anybody? I, I don't have a question, but before we hear the other comments, I'd, I'd just like to make this comment that, um, number one, I appreciate the, the ongoing efforts and the challenges that you have with the children's division in particular, in terms of what's out there, and it's a huge responsibility, um, that I know you, you and the department take seriously. I also appreciate the CEO's office working, uh, to, 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 to get us to this point where we can have this funding for this. Now the next challenge is, you got the resources, we really have to make sure we use them well and efficiently and maximize the bang for the buck with these resources, because those children deserve nothing less.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. Mr. Powers?
Thank you Chair Bennett, just, just to echo, you only have to hear a handful of stories of, of the work that these people do, the critically important work, they're helping families and children during terrible times of crisis, and so it's just some of the most important work that I think our county does, so thank you for the work that you do.
And we oftentimes talk about the county mission, boy, this is, this is the county mission right here, you know, in front of us, in terms of those children. Uh, we have Gloria Cervantes. Good morning, Ms. Cervantes.
Hello, good morning, um, CEO Powers, Chairman Bennett. Uh, I'm Gloria Cervantes, and I'm a social worker, not in children's, and in home support services, although I've had about twelve years in with the county, and in my experience, the work environment has changed. You know, we, when I started, we were still doing some manual logs, uh, you know, one computer per unit, that kind of thing. Right now, where, um, we, we're, we're, we've had some advances in some technology, but in the last few years, um, as, uh, has been mentioned, we have, uh, very high demands in our workload, and, um, the population, the demographics is different, we're seeing different types of faces coming in through our, um, doors that, um, haven't been in the, in, in, in the history of HSA. And, um, the increased demands have, um, have worn out some folks, you know? Um, and as a result of that, you know, the union has, um, has listened to, to the membership, and, um, a workload committee, uh, was, um, proposed, and, and now is part of the memorandum of agreement, and I've been part of that, uh, since it was, uh, formed as a member, and in March I took over as co-chair of that committee. And the workload, uh, committee forum, I feel that is very important, um, as you mentioned, uh, Mr. Bennett, that what, the resources are now there, but, uh, to get them to be used in the appropriate way, I feel that it's integral to have, um, line staff be able to have some input in that, as we're the ones that are there in the forefront. And in my participation in the workload committee, I've seen a lot of, uh, good come out of it in interaction with, uh, line staff and management, and, um, the folks that are making the decisions in policy and procedure and streamlining work, and, um, there has been some very positive things that have came out of the workload forum committee, um, and there's, uh, we're now seeing the fruits of that with the new allocations, and SEIU, um, and the workload committee does support the new allocations, of course, and we're happy to see that, and, um, we're just really happy, we're really happy that we're gonna have some reinforcements.
If I could ask you a question, you said the work, the, the, the work has changed, the population has changed, how's the population changed? What's the basic change that you're alluding to?
Well, in, uh, specifically for childrens, I'll let one of our other speakers speak to that specifically. As far as my program, uh, with the new ACA, um, we're seeing folks in our program within home support services that are coming in with their Medical in place, but now, um, the assessment of the social worker, what they see in the home, what the, what the person's, uh, medical condition and disabilities and physical impairment is now weighing more on the, the actual approval of benefits. And so, um, so we're, we're seeing those folks that used to not qualify for Medical are now, so that's creating an increase in workload in our specific program.
Thank you.
Which you'll hear about maybe later down the line, but, uh, today we're here to focus on children's services.
All right.
And I'll let my coworker in that department speak to that.
Thank you. Betsy Watson? Good morning, Ms. Watson.
CEO Powers, Chairman Bennett and Board. Um, my name is Betsy Watson, um, I've been a lead child welfare worker with Ventura County for seven years, I've been here for nine, and I also, um, worked in Hennepin County and Minneapolis before coming here. Um, my job right now is I work in after-hours, um, I do assessment investigation at night, um, work with our community partners, mostly law enforcement, um, hospital staff, um, go out to homes, uh, when most people don't want to be there. And, um, and I think to kind of answer, uh, what Gloria was talking about, the question that you asked, is one of the things that we've been seeing, and I've seen a big shift in, um, in the eight years I've been in, um, doing emergency response, is the, the families have gotten much more complex, and I've seen with the financial and economic changes in the county, uh, people are more stressed, um, so we're seeing a lot more domestic violence, we're seeing, um, a lot more drug use, just things that people turn to and things that happen when people are more stressed out. Um, and it's just made things a lot more complex in the families, um, a lot of lack of support, and, and another issue that we've been trying to work with, um, with our agency is resources. Social workers send people to the same resources that probation use, um, we, we use a lot of the recent resources, and there's waiting lists, and, so it's really difficult to get people the help that they need. Um, so did that answer, I think, the initial question?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and I've also been part of the workload forum, I'm a co-chair, uh, for about a year and a half, and I think one of the things we've discussed is how lucky we are in CFS that we have a really good working relationship with our management, um, and been able to just really accomplish a lot of things and have a lot of, um, good tough conversations quite often, and they've been really receptive to, um, the thoughts and ideas that social workers have had. Um, and we've worked really hard to come up with our caseload numbers, um, in all the areas, um, and just had a meeting yesterday, actually, to really kind of go over those and finalize them, and I think that we've come to a place where social workers, management, and everybody feel pretty comfortable. We're nowhere near those numbers right now. Um, I believe in ongoing, uh, the recommendation was fourteen to eighteen cases, and a lot of people are over thirty right now, um, so they're working, you know, two, two caseloads a lot of the time. So for me, it's been a real pleasure to be able to be part of that and work with management, um, be able to speak here and, and be part of that, so, thanks for having me.
Thank you both for taking the time to come and.
Absolutely.
Paying a face on to it and stuff. Board members, any questions, Barry, anything else you want to add before we vote?
No, I would just like to appreciate the comments, echo the hard work of the workload forum, uh, from our side, Melissa Livingston runs that, and they have been very open in difficult conversations, but we're, we're trying to, meeting of the minds to do what's best for the services and for the community we serve, so I appreciate their effort there. This recommendation will, will bring us, uh, in line, pretty close with the, the, the parameters of what we're shooting for, what everyone agrees to is a, a caseload within a, within a range, and that's what we hope for, and we'll be monitoring to that range, and so we can report back on that more accurately now to say, this is where we're going workload-wise, resource-wise, and everyone can see that very, very clearly. So I appreciate all the work to get to this point.
Supervisor Long?
I just wanted to thank you, um, uh, Mr. Zimmerman, for all the work, and to the CEO, and, and, uh, to Melissa, uh, and the social workers, it's, um, it is our core mission to take care of the children in our community and make sure they're as safe as they can be, and, and to, um, step in to, to assist them when they need that help, and to make sure we're, we're ready to respond, we're, we're prepared, we're qualified, we're, we're caring, and I, I know this is a, um, was a significant, uh, ask to make, um, but working closely with the CEO and, and, and under your leadership, Barry, to be able to, to know that by leveraging these funds, we get such a significant benefit for both the quality of the work environment for our caseworkers who are our frontline, and to, to assure them that they're supported, so I, I appreciate the good work on this.
Thank you.
I, I also just want to really thank you for coming forward with this, I think, you know, it's integral that we have low, uh, caseloads that are manageable, uh, and that really translates directly into being able to serve those individuals, those kids, and being able to, to serve them and, and not have the kind of, you know, issues that they're having in Los Angeles, where they're just like, you can tell that they're way overburdened with, with the work that they have, so all we can do to make sure that we can provide the best services, I think, and this is, this is integral to that.
Yeah, appreciate that, and I appreciate that, working with the CEOs puts, put us in a position to be able to do this, and so that's where we're at, so, thank you.
It's great to hear you working with your, your staff, trying to find that balance. I know you have that balance of trying to come to us, money, people, mission, it's, it's a tough balancing act, but, uh, at the end, I think Supervisor Bennett, Supervisor Long had said, you know, we gotta protect the kids, and when they need that assistance, we step in and help during that time, and I think it's been good, so, let's make it all work here.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, and Barry, Melissa, and staff, thank you so much for your good work.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, we're ready to vote. We're ready to vote. You know, it's a big deal action here, 59 positions.
Yeah, it's huge, and I appreciate it. And so, now the real heavy work begins.
Barry said it. Item 61.
Barry, is that a new department?
Yeah. So, we'll jump in. 61, I'm going to take the lead on this one as well. It's a joint letter with Healthcare Agency, Behavioral Health, Melanie Roy and myself in our efforts in kicking off and dealing with the implementation of KDA and the programs associated with the mental health services for our children here. This is kind of a second phase, if you will. When we first introduced this, we received a few initial positions to kind of set up the structure and the system itself. Now, we're going through further implementation of it. The request is for some positions, seven positions in behavioral health, in order to continue on and now expand our ability to screen and assess children to give them the appropriate services, as well as the service side expanding contracts, which is the service provider side of the house, to deliver the actual needed services. And you can see there's two contractors that are expanding slots and capacity in order to serve these children as they be assessed. One position is for the healthcare, not the human services agency, that we are responsible for reporting out, collecting data. And so, that is one position to do that, so we can adequately monitor and come up with the best practices based on our analytics that we can glean from the system as a whole. So, this is kind of the second phase, and we'll continue to keep you apprised of the progress and really the expansion associated with the KDA services that we're required to provide. At this time, we're still scoping out what is the total universe, if you will, and I think that's, we're still assessing that. And so, further reports, we'll be back on that.
Must be nice to work in a field that's static with no changes. Now, one more huge adjustment to try to make and try to make this work properly and stuff.
Very big system shift for both behavioral health and ourselves.
Yeah. All right. We have a motion and a second. We're ready to vote. All right. Thank you, and thank you all for your patience while we went through a longer agenda this morning than we wanted to. Thank you very much. How many folks do we have here from the healthcare agency for item 59? Just one? All right, one versus two, right? You lose, right? We go back to people here for the, I'm sorry, we go back to item 49, that's motocross, right? Okay, thank you. I think, well, actually, are you going to be 15 minutes or even closer? Let's do Rego. Go ahead, come on up. Let's do that, right? I was joking a little bit when I looked and saw 15 minutes, I'm sorry. I'm going to go back to item 59 real quick.
I think I can still say good morning. Good morning, Chair Bennett, members of the board, Mr. Powers, Rigo Berto Vargas, Public Health Director for the record. The item before you is to kind of build upon the last presentation, really the excellent collaboration of the healthcare agency with the human services agency, in this case, with public health in particular. And so, the item before you is to increase the allocation and the funding support that we get from our partners at HSA. And it is to fund two full-time but fixed-term public health nurses that will now be an integral part of a team that will assess families as they get ready to re-enter the workforce. They would do intensive case management related to their healthcare needs. And so, the item again is to increase the allocation and to authorize our Human Services Director to establish the positions.
You know, what I really like about this is, in spite of where the federal government's trying to go in terms of prioritizing on the homeless issue, this allows us to rededicate our commitment to homeless families are the first priority for us, trying to keep children and families from experiencing the tragedy of homelessness. Homelessness is a tragedy for everybody, but you multiply the effects dramatically when you make it a homeless family. So, really appreciate the efforts here. I'm glad we're able to do this. Okay. Been moved and seconded. We're ready to vote. Thank you very much. Thanks for your patience waiting also. All right, now, let's, sorry, all right, let's go back and do item 49, the motocross. Yeah. Go ahead.
Good morning. We're minute shy. Good morning still, Chair Bennett and supervisors and Mr. Powers. Kari Finley, I'm in the Army Planning Division, and I'm the project planner for this ordinance amendment. We brought this forward to you last April for a screening for the text amendment, and we're bringing it back with some additional research based on your direction. This request was made by Mr. Kevin Keel, who is the current owner of the Piru motocross facility, in order to allow his NAGA-form use to continue operations at his current location. There it is. Okay, the objectives today are to complete the screening process and review revised draft text amendment for the motocross citing criteria. Screening amendments of amendments is required by the noncoastal zoning ordinance, and the authorization to continue the screening would not imply the ultimate board approval, and additional analysis and refinements may be required. You may recall that in April, your board directed staff to conduct additional research to consider options that would allow the applicant to continue operating the legally permitted facility in Piru and also to not substantially increase the number of parcels that would be eligible for over the current citing criteria for new conditional use permits. So, staff has conducted some additional research. And as you recall, the proposed amendment was to modify two of the citing criteria related to not being allowed in green belts and not being allowed in designated high-fire-hazard Again, this, just, let's see, so you can see here is the project site, and the white is the border of the Piru urban boundary. This shows, this slide shows that the site is within the green belt, which is the green. The site is the little blue outlined parcel there. And also, the red hash marks is the high-fire-hazard severity zone. And this slide shows the new proposed draft language. This has been agreed upon by county council, the applicant and the planning division. The first criteria relates to green belts, and that's the same as it was in April. We did not change that one. The second one shows our new proposed language, and it reads, "within a designated or high or very high hazard severity zone or equivalent designation unless the facility was operating in such an area in accordance with the noncoastal zoning ordinance as of the state." Because it'd be a new policy direction. So, the effects of these two amendments on other parcels in the county, countywide, the same is true for the green belt provision, that it'll only affect the facility in Piru by allowing it to continue to operate. And then, the second provision for high-fire-hazard area prohibition, only the Piru facility would be allowed to continue, would continue to be eligible, but we found no new parcels that would currently be considered eligible. That, there's a little provision in there that, the extent of our research was only to look at single assessor parcels that were 40 acres. And the current site is two, so it's not, it's two assessor parcels, but it constitutes a legal law, and we didn't get into that depth of our, to the research, because it'd be pretty difficult to determine how many adjacent parcels are under 40 acres throughout the open space in the county. But just as a kind of a benchmark here, there are no parcels that, single parcels that would qualify and meet all of the eligibility requirements. We did receive one email comment from the director of the Los Padres Forest Watch. It's a nonprofit, and he indicated that he would have been concerned if we were going to allow new facilities in high-fire-hazard areas, and we would have gotten a comment, a formal comment from him if this recommendation was going to allow new parcels. So, I just wanted to add that. That's the only comment we've received. This slide shows a summary and compares, a comparison of some of the different research scenarios that we looked at. It's provided in your board letter on page four. I'm not going to get into all the details of them, but if you have questions about them, the second two, five and six would have eliminated this Piru facility, so those were ruled out. And the other three are just the previous recommendation, the current recommendation, and then a variation on the current recommendation. If you have questions about those, I'd be happy to elaborate when I'm at my conclusion. So, our recommendation is that you authorize the planning division to proceed processing this text amendment to allow the current facility to continue to operate. Other options would be to direct staff to look at another alternative or determine that it does not, or alternatively, you can determine that this amendment does not represent a policy direction that the board wants to support. Next steps, if the board agrees to this, we will continue processing the conditional use permit time extension with the text amendment concurrently. Then, it would go to the planning commission for a recommended action and then come back to you for final approval of the text amendment. And that concludes my presentation. I'm here for questions, and then also, Mr. Keel is here available as well if you have any questions for him.
Do you have any questions for staff?
Just a quick one. How many motocross racetracks are there in Ventura County?
There's one that's legally permitted in the unincorporated area, and it's this one.
And it's this, it is this one?
It's this Piru facility.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anything else? We have no speakers. We're ready for motion. Been moved and seconded. We're ready to vote. All right.
Thank you for your creativity in coming forward with a revision like this.
Thank you, staff. I appreciate the good work on this.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right. And we have item 48 to handle, but I see that the ag commissioner is here. Unless board members have an objection, we will go to our 11:30 annual crop and livestock stock report, unless somebody has some objections. Barry? Good morning, Henry.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. [inaudible]. I have copies of the actual report here, I don't know if we need the whole 15 or some I have a PowerPoint presentation that should queue up at any moment now. I hope they're not out for lunch. But anyway, let me start by formally acknowledging and greeting Chairman Bennett, members of the board, Mr. Powers and staff. Good afternoon now. For the record, my name is Henry Gonzalez, and I serve as Ventura County's Agricultural Commissioner. And today is my pleasure to be presenting the annual crop and livestock report. Now, this report that we compiled here in 2014 is for the 2013 year, just to be clear. That's not a typo. Okay, let's see if I don't push the wrong button. No, push the right button. So, the mandate is for the agricultural commissioner to report annually the condition, the acreage, the value, production of agriculture in our respective counties. So, that's my mandate, but of course, it takes many people to put this report together. And so, I want to first start off by acknowledging some of these individuals and thanking them, because without them, mandate or not, it wouldn't get done. So, first of all, I'd like to thank the ag industry, the growers, the shippers, the packers, for providing us their own individual information, which we maintain that information confidential, and we compile it into this report. So, nobody gets to see that information. Also, want to thank the industry for allowing us to take photographs at their facilities and of some of their commodities as well. Also, this year, we have a number of comments that we captured from them, some quotes, so that they could tell their own story. So, thanks to all the industry members that helped us put this report together. Now, I also need to thank staff, in particular Corinne Bowhair, Deputy Ag Commissioner. She was in charge of the overall production of the report. That's one of her new responsibilities, and I believe she did a wonderful job in capturing all of the information. And then, working with the other group of folks that I need to thank, and that is from our General Services Agency. I don't know if any of them are here, but the General Services Agency, some of their graphics staff worked extensively on this report, putting it all together, making it look very nice, and specifically Matt Krieger, Donna Schmidt and Darrell Coat. I also have to give thanks to the director of the General Services Agency, Paul, because he helped us out. We were running a little bit late on our deadlines, and he helped us make sure that it got done by today. So, I also need to give thanks to Paul. In addition, you will notice, and you probably already saw if you opened up, if you were able to open up the PDF that I sent to you, the beautiful pictures that are in this year's crop report. These pictures were taken by our department staff, Linda Bellamy and Ingeus Richters specifically took these pictures. So, these are all local pictures, and I think they did a marvelous job. In particular, I liked the picture of the sunflowers and then the one with the raspberry with the honeybee on it. I thought those came out really, really nice. And on the online version, those colors just really pop out. So, thank you to them as well. So, this year, we thought that the theme could be, should be, local and world marketplace. And so, throughout the crop report, we talk about the local market and also exports. So, we highlight how Ventura County produce is grown, packed, shipped, exported, and also, actually, we touch upon consumption just a bit. Before I forget, I want to invite you all to take a few moments, if you can, after my presentation, because we've again assembled some snacks based on the top 10. And so, they're going to be outside where we have staff out there holding others away from them, so that you guys can have...
And commissioner, do you have cilantro out there too?
Of course we do.
Number 10.
Number 10, yes, we do. We have all the, all the top 10 are represented there in the snacks. So, if you do have a chance, please take a few moments to taste some of what we produce So, this is the big number, which was a bit of a surprise to me, because I knew strawberries took a big hit, and so, didn't know this number was going to come up as big as it did until we added all the numbers together. And this is a record year for us. Last year was a record, this is a record year for us. We are now officially over the $2 billion mark with this 6.7% increase. So, that is what is new for this 2013 report. Also, something that we added here to help with the county strategic plan is to report on the number of irrigated acres. And so, we've taken this on, and this is the new number, 92,273 acres. Now, the way we do this is that we only measure that which is irrigated. So, we exclude the roads, any building areas, any parking lots. This is only what is irrigated. And we use the information that we capture in... And we use the information that we capture in our restricted material permits. So this is a very exact number. Also want to point out that that $2 billion number, that is nowhere near what growers make. Growers do not make that number. This is what they get for their commodities in the field. This is not a profit number. This, it's a gross overall number, and in some instances, they lose money. And they lose money because they know that they have to keep their market. And if you don't provide for your market, you'll lose that market. And so even if they lose money, they will harvest and continue farming even though they've taken losses. So they kind of blend them over a number of years at times, depending on their ability to do that. So that number does not mean that's what growers netted. That is a gross number. I should have pointed that out sooner. And here, here's the top 10. Always one of favorites. Folks want to know what are the top 10 commodities? And you'll see the little note there that says that there are no new commodities in the top 10, and that is indeed the case. But there was some movement on the top 10 list, and I'll point those out before I go into talking specifically about each commodity. Strawberries, still the number one. Avocados made a significant move from, I believe they were fifth place last year. So avocados, lemons, and celery are the only commodities that moved out of their respective rank in the top 10. Avocados moving up to second from fifth, lemons moving down from second to fifth, and then celery having been pushed down to sixth because of the increase in avocado. Those are the only three commodities that moved from their ranking from 2012. Avocados, lemons, and celery. Everything else, all the other commodities are still in their respective places from And like I said, strawberries, again, number one. Even though they suffered a 12% decrease over 2012, they are still, they're so big that they are still the number one commodity. I think they took like about an $82 million hit. And why? Bad weather. Bad weather. We had some early season cold weather that suppressed the plants, suppressed production, followed by a bit of a warming up period where the plants just put out a lot of fruit for all that energy that they were holding back from the cold weather. And so it seemed like all the plants came into production about the same time, and then there was a bit of a crash, followed by unseasonably, unseasonable storms in the Midwest that suppressed the markets. So those kind of things all added into this significant decrease in our strawberry production. So about $82 million reduction, but still, strawberries is our number one commodity.
Commissioner, is that because of the water drought or...
No.
It just happened?
No. Well, actually, there was some other factors that are weather-related in regards to the drought and strawberries, and possibly other commodities. The combination of having the drought and the cold weather kind of served like a, to dehydrate the plant. And so it weakened the plant. There was also, because of weather conditions, we had a relatively large surge in mites. And so mites were in huge populations throughout strawberries, and that also affected...
But we still had the same amount of acreage.
Actually, we had a slight increase of acreage, about 200 acres. See, is that right? We had a slight increase in acreage. So we had an increase in acreage, a drop in per acre production, a drop in total value. But if you look at the fresh versus the processed, the fresh actually inched up and the process dropped a little bit, but overall, it was a drop in total value. Still number one. This might be the story of the 2013 year. Avocados had an 85% increase over the 2012 year. Now, you probably remember folks mentioning that avocados are alternate-bearing crop. Have one good year, followed by a bad, followed by another good year. So this was the good year. And there was other conditions that contributed to this sizable increase. And just to keep things in perspective, this 85%, it seems humongous, but I know a county that will remain nameless in the north had a 421% increase in their avocado production. Now, they're small in relative comparison to us, so increases of this sort, unusual but not totally unheard of. So this increase, we got a good fruit set. We had the fruit hung on to the trees and developed into a really great year for avocados, moving them up to the number two position. Moving right along to raspberries. Raspberries continues to increase in value. Had about a 5% increase. Still not enough to surpass avocados, but still sufficient to maintain its third-place And here, we did have an increase in acreage, a pretty good increase in acreage, but we had a reduction in per acre production. So the tonnage was down, although the overall tonnage value was up.
Mr. Gonzalez...
Yes.
Looking at this picture, I have to remind you that it's an unfair labor practice to do this to us during lunchtime.
This is building up to the crescendo that's right outside the doors there, but I'll step it up. Here, nursery stock had a modest increase of about 2%. And still, they retain their position. They're in fourth place again. And like many of the commodities, the acreage, the production, the value, et cetera, there's things that are going up and things that are going down. It was only avocados that had everything pointing in the right direction, in the up position. So in nursery stock, there were some, some of the nursery stock plants went up and others went down in value. So overall, it was a 2%. Lemons moved down. They had about a 6% decrease, and they moved from fifth down to the fifth place. And they've had a bit of a drop in acreage. But I've already heard word that this year is turning out to be, looking like a pretty good year for lemon, so stand by for next year. A teaser there for you. Salary, here's another pleasant surprise. Salary had a really healthy 35% increase in overall value, but still, only maintained their sixth-place position. Oh, no, they moved down from fifth to sixth, pushed down by avocados being so, so big. Here with salary, we had an increase in acreage, a slight increase in per-ton value, but an overall decrease in per acre production. So value up, production down, acreage up. So in all, a 35% increase. Tomatoes had a decrease. We had a significant loss in acreage here. We lost a major grower, just totally went out of tomato business here in the county. So we had a substantial decrease in planted acreage, harvested acreage, and then a 4% decrease overall. We didn't take a bigger cut because we have certain growers that produce a lot of tomatoes for the area that they have. But we lost quite a few acres. I think close to about 1,000 acres overall that, you know, those acres are not lost. They'll grow something else instead, but it wasn't, but it wasn't tomatoes. Peppers, another, another increase, a nice increase. I would take that. 8% increase. And again, they maintained their position. Had an increase in acreage and a slight increase in per acre production. Cut flowers, there's that beautiful picture I was mentioning earlier. Just love that. But unfortunately, cut flowers took a bit of a hit, so where peppers went up 8%, cut flowers went down 8%. But they still maintained their position in the ninth spot. And cilantro had a nice increase of 24%, but still only stayed at the 10th position. And there you have the top 10. So I want to talk a little bit about, and you can't really, folks in the audience won't be able to see this very well, but you have your copies in front of you. And this is something we did a little bit different this year. We wanted to, since we were talking about the world marketplace that Ventura County is a part of, we thought we would look at some of the statistics that the department maintains, but hadn't really looked at. And so what we were looking to see was, what are our exports looking like? And I'm hoping that in the future, we capture more of this type of information, because I believe it has value. So what we found in our little research was that there are over 27 different commodities that we ship overseas. And we have about 81 different countries that we ship to. Now, overall, it's right around 10,000 shipments that come out of this county. Now, it's, and it's, one of our duties is to inspect and certify those shipments for exportation, making sure that the, whatever is in the shipment does not present a, an issue for the importing country. Make sure that we're not sending them our diseases, our pests, et cetera, that they don't want. And so we conduct the inspections, we issue a phytosanitary certificate. That's why we have such a really good number for the number of shipments. So right around 10,000 shipments, and that's kind of what we've been averaging for a number of years. But we thought that information would be of benefit. You can see here, Japan is by far our biggest export partner, followed by Canada, Korea, and Mexico. And then you have the top 10 there as well. And then we listed the other countries below, so that if folks want to know where there's potential market, they can have that information.
Under the fruit and vegetable seed...
Yes.
That, those big seed companies that are...
Yes, yes. And you know, one comparison that could be made, and we're thinking about doing this, and we might do this in the future, is the pounds or tons that are involved in these shipments. But in regards to the seed that you just brought up, Mr. Bennett, you can have a ton of broccoli valued as much as a pound of broccoli seed because of the differences in value.
Huge shipments, but not, not in the top 10 in terms of dollar values.
Well, not, not to us. In many instances, some of this seed has been imported into the county, has been processed here, so it's not really one of our produced commodities here. We do grow some commodities for seed, and our inspectors are out there roging the fields for symptoms of disease, so that we can base our certification of those, of that seed, based on those inspections in the field. So we do have that, but a lot of our seed comes in from out of the, out of the county, sometimes out of the state, sometimes out of the country. It comes here, is processed, refined, and then re-exported to other countries. So this year, for our vignette, we thought we would get the local viewpoint, so we've included some quotes from some of the folks in the industry. You can see the list here of some of them. Edgar Terry from Terry Farms, Danny Pierra from Rio Farms, Emily Ayala from Friends Ranches, Tom Crocker from the Cattlemen's Association, and Ray Schweitz, I believe, from Peterson Ranch, a fruit stand. So anyway, we included quotes from them in here so that they could tell their own story, I think, very well, as well or better than us, because they're living the dream, so to speak. So we included quotes from them, and I think you'll find them interesting. We also did not forget the request of Supervisor Parks wanting us to put back the farmers' markets, the certified farmers' markets. And so we did, and we presented them here, I think nicely, and I think, I think we'll see that year after year. I think that's a good addition to the crop report, not every once in a while, but I think it's of value for the locals. So this is the local angle for us, where locals go buy their local produce, either at one of the fruit stands, like the Peterson fruit stand, or at one of the farmers' markets.
That could almost be an app, you know, for the county, if someone wants to go to a farmer's market in their area to be able to quickly identify where that is, or if they're visiting an area where they are. It's good information to have. Thanks for including that.
And if we had a way to direct, have a map feature there, to direct them there, I'd have to think about, work on that.
We've got the front page of our county website, too. We can put those kind of links on.
And seeing that avocado was looking to have had a very good year, we included this story of the avocado, at least here in Ventura County. And so story avocado, of the avocado, Ventura County born, raised, and consumed. And we have about 11 quotes in here from various individuals and businesses that kind of tell the story from the very beginning of avocados, back in 1871. A quote there from the late Hank Brokaw that's at the Ventura Museum. But then also some quotes here from other growers, but we really traced the story of the avocado here in Ventura County from when we grow the trees, the seedlings, and we graft them, and we plant them, and we grow them out, and then we harvest them, and then we pack them, ship them. And then, of course, the ultimate is when we get to eat them, in avocados, in guacamole. So that kind of tells that story in their own words, again, because, again, I believe they can tell their story better than others. And you can see just the different perspectives in there from their various perspectives. So that's, that's the presentation. I sent you folks the report back on Friday to give you an opportunity to read it, to see if there's things that might pop out that you might want to ask me. So for me, this is the fun part. So if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer your questions.
I really like the vignettes. I think that's a nice touch to this. Thank you also for including the farmers' markets. A couple of quick questions I have. One, you reported, it's reported in here that beef consumption was approximately 6 million pounds of beef was consumed in Ventura County. I was wondering, is that something that you can find a chart of, how that beef consumption has been growing or decreasing? I think that would be an interesting number to know about.
We could probably get that information. We didn't vet the information in the quotes that we got.
Oh, that's right. It's part of one of the vignettes, isn't it?
Yes. And so, but we could probably find that information out for you and send that to you. It'd be interesting to see.
Thank you.
My prediction is that it's increased. I don't know.
Yeah.
My hope is that since we produce fruit and vegetables, that fruit and vegetable consumption would also increase.
Uh huh. Well, we are getting bigger, too. Another question that I have, the bee products have taken a sharp decline from last year.
Yeah.
About a third or so of what it was. Do you know why that is?
Yes, yes. And this is back to Supervisor Zerigosa's question about the drought. Bees, you probably realize, forage for their pollen, nectar. And certainly, we continue to irrigate what we have, and so those plants, those flowers that are irrigated... that are irrigated agriculture, the bees had someplace to go and pick up some pollen and some nectar. But they also, the bees also forage in natural lands that are not irrigated, that did not have water, and so in many instances, what would have been wildflowers are not there. As a matter of fact, some of the beekeepers reported to us that they produced nothing, because they're rebuilding their hives, because they can't collect any pollen or honey when there are no flowers out in native land. So anything that's not irrigated probably didn't produce much in flowers, yes.
Commissioner, this is great presentation. The question I have is, if the drought continues, what effect is that going to have on our productivity and all those good things that we're doing?
Well, we're going to be seeing that, no doubt, and no doubt it will have an effect. One of the impacts that I mentioned earlier was when it's dry like that, it's, certain conditions are more conducive to pest pressures, specifically mites, I mentioned already, but also some funguses are also like that type of weather. So we're going to be seeing some pest situations that we've not encountered before. But also commodities are going to be changing, I believe. We haven't fully developed the allocations for water quite yet. I mean, we're getting there, but there's some refinement that has to happen. So the growers are also adjusting their practices, and I think what they're doing right now is looking to where they have not only water, but quality water for the commodities that they're growing. And I think they're going to be growing more, which we've already seen, that they're starting to grow more beans. And so I really don't believe that too many growers are going to follow. I think they will instead grow beans or something that requires either no water or very little water to get something for their investment, as opposed to nothing for their investment. I think that's what we've already started to see, and this is anecdotal at this point. We haven't really done a survey to see what acreage are now going into beans. But I have seen a lot of land that's going into strawberries, so my assumption is that they must have water. And their seasons might get cut short, though, if they run out of water, and so we may see additional impacts of that nature.
Thank you.
Any other question? If not, then I would like to, again, invite you to join us if you have a few minutes to try the guacamole, the lemonade.
We're coming as fast as we can. We got a couple other quick items that we have to handle. Let's have a motion to receive and file, Liz.
And Henry, I appreciate the board's great. Also, I just want to thank your department and your people, and Brian Miller is part of this whole thing that happened out there by the college in Simi Valley with the flies and all that. You guys got on it, you were experts in what you did, and you were just really responsive, and everybody was so happy. And the people that were hauling responded instantly, did all their stuff, cleaned it up, but it was just good. I just appreciate all the hard work your agency did. It was really real professional, and they were so impressed at Moore Park about it. Brian talked about it, and they got us waste management, because they looked like they were the problem, or it wasn't, but it was just another proof that you're doing the right thing, so, thank you.
Thank you, supervisor. Thank you all.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. And that motion, we've received and filed the crop report. We have item 48, revised appointment process.
Members of the board, Mr. Powers, Chair Bennett, Scott Powers from the county executive office. Before I use a recommendation to change the manner in which your board makes appointments to the Resource Conservation District's Board of Directors. As you know, every two years, your board makes regular appointments. These terms are four years. Before I use a recommendation to move towards direct appointments by your board, currently the appointment process is made by a review panel. They convene, they review the applications and bring those recommendations to you. The review panel is made up of a member of the Watership Protection District, Watership Coalition of Ventura County, and a member of the RCD board. Before you today, again, is to eliminate that and to bring the appointments back to you. Should your board approve this recommendation, I want to assure you, there's no change in any other of the administrative functions. Our office will still supply or provide public outreach, qualifications of the applications, in addition to dispersing of the applications to you. Once your selections are made, our office will compile them and bring them back to your board for a collective action. So the intent is not to shift any administrative burden towards you, but it's more to have your board have a direct input into who goes on the RCD board. I'm happy to take your questions.
I think this helps streamline the process, and I do support the recommendation. On another note, I wonder if you could bring back for us, as I understand, we provide a yearly allocation to this district. I'm just wondering what we get for that, what the services we receive, and that'd be good to know.
I just want to say thank you for your good work on this. It was very thorough, and I think the recommendation, I'm supportive of the recommendation, and appreciate that.
Thank you.
You did good, in-depth research and work on it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're ready to vote. Thank you for your patience. I didn't know you had to wait a long time.
Anytime. I'm going to have some food now.
Hour and a half, right? Okay, we have item 62, Public Works, and then we'll be ready for our closed session lunch. Take your time, ready?
Good afternoon, Chair Bennett, members of the board, Mr. Powers, Ready for Color with Water and Sanitation Department of the Public Works Agency. In lieu of a franchise agreement for the operation of the Simi Valley landfill within the UA area of the county, Waste Management and County have entered into an agreement in 1989, when AB 939 was formed, was enacted. This agreement regulates the annual posted gate rate at the Simi Valley landfill, and also it establishes the annual county surcharge. Consistent with the terms of the agreement, we have prepared the market area rate study, which is included as Exhibit 1 in our staff report. And also, based on the conditions in the agreement, we are recommending the surcharge fee be increased from $2.76 per tonne to $2.85 per tonne, effective January 1st, 2015. That concludes my verbal presentation. I'm available to take any questions you might have.
Thank you for your brevity. All right, we're ready for a motion? It's been moved and seconded, we're ready to vote. Correspondence agenda, we need to remove receiving file.
Passes, you're done, thank you very much.
Thank you, ready?
Oh, thank you.
All right, correspondence agenda, we're ready to vote. That passes, and we're ready to eat, I mean, go to closed session, right? All righty. So we'll go to closed session, we'll be back out at 1:30 for our, what's that? Yes, I think we should walk back that direction. See what we can bring. I'd like to call the meeting back to order, and we have two items left on our agenda, and that's 1:30 time certain, item 57, and that's the memorandum of agreement with the Ventura Employees Association, CEO's office. Jose is back.
Yes. Good afternoon, board members, Chair Bennett, CEO Powers, today in Co-CEO Labor Relations. The item we have before you today is a recommendation for your board to hold a public hearing on the adoption of an amendment for the contract between the County of Ventura and the Ventura Employees Association, VEA. Another recommendation for your board to waive the second hearing that's required under the personnel rules and regulations. And finally, a third recommendation for your board to adopt this amendment at the conclusion of today's hearing. If you recall, the parties have a three-year agreement, labor agreement in place through January 27, 2017. When the parties entered into this agreement back in December of 2013, VEA was only the third union at that time to enter into a comprehensive labor agreement with the county that incorporated all of the county pension initiatives. At that time, the county set forth a goal of consistency amongst the unions and the bargaining contracts that were reached. Since we negotiated the VEA agreement, the county has successfully entered into six other bargaining agreements, all containing the same provisions, though in a slightly different format. So to keep with our goal of maintaining consistency, we invited VEA to come back to the bargaining table to look at some of the provisions of the contract. So VEA and the bargaining team for the County of Ventura met on July 9 to review their contract to see if there were any changes that would be appropriate to be made to be consistent with other agreements, and there were. The amendment that is before you today summarizes those changes. First, we will change the market-based adjustment increase, so that it applies to any job classification that does not exceed above 10% of market. Previously, it was, they needed to be negative 6% of market in order to be eligible. So now, as long as they're not above 10% of market, they will be eligible. Second, the educational incentive was agreed to have been converted into a 401K contribution. We're going to step back from that, and it will continue as a cash payment to the employee's check. And thirdly, we have refined the overtime cost provisions in the agreement to match those that were done with management, with SEIU, and with IOE, like a local 501. So with this amendment, we're achieving consistency with the management, SEIU, and IOE. The VEA membership has ratified this, and we are now presenting it to your board for adoption. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? All right, we're ready for a motion then? Those have to be the most pleasant of negotiations to go back and have, aren't they?
Very pleasant, yeah. Thank you.
Very good, Jose.
And you guys deserve to have some pleasant negotiations, right? As we go forward. All right, item 58, our second 1:30 time certain item, and that's the Public Works Agency about the solid waste collection agreements. Good afternoon, Mr. Powers.
Good afternoon, again, Chair Bennett, members of the board, Mr. Powers, Ready for Color with Water and Sanitation Department of the Public Works Agency. On February 11 of this year, your board has approved the residential solid waste collection agreements and one hybrid, and your board directed staff to come back with additional analysis and see, to return your board after examining whether non-exclusive commercial collectors agreement should be limited to those currently under contract with the county. We have met with the commercial haulers, and we have negotiated a 10% reduction for the maximum commercial rates with Harrison Industries and also with Waste Management, and the other commercial haulers previously have agreed to hold the line or forego the CPI index for calendar year 2014. Based on this new information and negotiations we had, we are recommending that your board approve 13 commercial haulers with existing contractors we have. The effective date of, if your board approves these recommendations, effective date would be August 15 through December 31 of 2023. I just would like to thank Lisa McCalla, Gloria Silvestri-McCombe, and also Bruce Baluski, IW Manager, who have done a lot of rate analysis, research, as we went through the year-long process with the residential and also commercial hauler agreements. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Do we have any questions before our public speakers? We have three public speakers here. Our first public speaker is John Marshall. Good afternoon, Mr. Marshall.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is John Marshall. I have been general counsel to Crown Disposal for the last over 25 years. I wish to bring a few matters to the attention of this board with respect to the exclusion of Crown Disposal from consideration here. As this board will recall, this matter first came to the board in February. Crown was recommended by the staff, but at the hearing, several concerns were raised with respect to both Crown and some of the other bidders, so additional information was required. One of the major items of information was safety records, and there were some allegations by one of the other haulers that Crown did not, its affiliates, did not have a good safety record. So in response to that, staff was directed to conduct some further examination. Crown participated in that process, provided information to staff, which indicated that Crown and its affiliates, including Community Recycling, did have a good safety record, and in fact, a better safety record than several of the other bidders on this matter. Over the period of the last six months, Crown has asked staff what's happening, what's happening. This matter was on calendar several times and then taken off, and Crown heard nothing. This last Friday was the first time that Crown heard that the staff had changed its recommendation and sought to exclude Crown from the mix here. This was rather shocking to Crown, and therefore, I was asked to come and speak to the board with respect to this matter and raise a few issues. Mr. Tim Frye was planning on being here, however, as I said, we just found out about this on Friday, Mr. Frye was pre-committed to a hearing before another public board in Northern California today. So he apologizes for not being here and has asked me to come. I would raise before the board several issues. You've received, I believe, today, and I don't know if you've had an opportunity to review, a letter from Mr. Charles Cohen laying out some of our concerns, first and foremost of which is the absolute lack of due process here. Due process involves notice and a meaningful opportunity to be heard, yet this matter all of a sudden came to the fore on Friday, after six months, after cooperation between Crown and staff, and we heard nothing about it until we were advised, Crown was advised, that the recommendation was simply to approve the existing carriers. So I'd like to bring just a couple of matters to the attention of the board from a legal standpoint. One, as I indicated, from a safety standpoint, Crown's record compares very favorably with those of the other bidders. In fact, Crown, in terms of OSHA fines, was fined approximately $4,800 over the course of 10 years, and one of the successful bidders, Waste Management, was fined $199,675 during that same period. Those are indicative of a vastly different safety record of the two entities. Secondly, I would point out to the board that of the 13 haulers here, two are specialty haulers, I believe Peach Hills does only green waste, and a cattle company only does livestock, but of the others, six of them are owned by two companies. The Harrison Company owns EJ Harrison, Santa Clara Valley Disposal, Newberry Disposal, and American Resource Recovery, and JTC owns JTC Inc. and JT's Rubbish Recycling. So we have a much smaller body of recommended bidders here. Another item that we'd like to address the board on has to do with the reference in this recommendation by staff to follow the dictates of Ventura County Ordinance 4750-4, which lays out a number of recommendations with respect to what the board should and should not be considering in terms of granting a franchise. The language in the report appears to indicate that this grants to the board very broad discretion to consider certain items with respect to the entire contracts, when in fact, the contracts relate to regular collection, special collection, and temporary collection. By temporary collection, I mean the roll-off bins and similar items, when in fact, the ordinance only deals with regular collection services. No new contractor or franchise to provide regular collection service to commercial generators is subject to these factors. Our main concern, members of the board, is the total lack of due process here. The reduction of 10% negotiated with two, not all, but only two of the vendors, was never brought to Crown's attention, was never in any of the discussions, was never in the proposals that were made to Crown by the county, and therefore, we submit a serious lack of fairness here. Concluded my comments, if the board has any questions. I made the five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. Any questions for Mr. Marshall? Our next speaker is Chuck Cohen.
Good afternoon, y'all. Members of the board, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Powers. I was sitting peacefully at my desk on Friday when a call came in and said, "Are you aware of that?" And there had been a conversation, apparently not even at that point, formal notice, of what had taken place between staff and the existing group of collectors. I think it's important to recognize that this did come as more than a surprise, as a shock, because it's not the kind of fair dealing that we would have anticipated in having conducted ourselves in, I think, a constructive fashion throughout the process, which was initiated by the county. This is not a matter where Crown has attempted to force itself upon the county. It's a matter that people in the industry were invited to provide their qualifications so that the county could consider at the conclusion of the period of these contracts, whether or not they should go out to additional collectors for these purposes. And so, once Crown entered into the end of the process by submitting its materials and its application, I don't understand why it was not accorded the same notice and the same opportunities to negotiate with staff on all these points. The last time we were here in February, there were certain specific things that were raised as unsupported allegations by the competitors. This is a competitive business, and if you'll recall, my comments at that hearing were that we have full respect for the haulers that are already in place in Ventura County. They've done a good job, but that doesn't mean that competition is necessarily simply disposed of by the fact that you have good people functioning here. And so, at that point, once Crown is in the process, it expected to be accorded the same dignity and the rights to participate throughout the negotiations. It was never aware of the fact that the staff, as I read the report, I don't know anything else about it because we haven't had very much time to consider it, but as I read the report, staff made this change of recommendation based solely on the fact that there had been, at some point, we don't know, a negotiation between staff and between the principal haulers, who, again, for whom we have great respect and have done a good job for the county, but we were not invited to participate in those discussions. So therefore, staff has no idea whether Crown would have agreed to a 10% reduction or a 12.5% reduction, or any other type of reduction. We're also mystified by the fact that the other haulers, probably maybe a total of about seven actual individual companies, by count, there were nine that have not agreed to this rating decrease, and yet, those folks still remain as qualified collectors under the staff report and recommendation. Now, if rate became the only issue, which it was not when you initially sent out the RFQ, all who did not meet the 10% reduction should have been treated equally, and that's not been the case here, and particularly as it relates to Crown, which has had no opportunity to even be in the conversation. So I know, you know, I have great respect for this board and for this county, and I know, and for our competitors, but I just can't believe that this process would go forward in such an unusual arrangement as we've seen it. So I'm simply requesting that the board further investigate what's going on here before you enter into an acceptance of the recommendation and proceed to have staff execute contracts with the existing group. We're still ready, willing, and able to participate. We would want to do so on a good faith basis. We would want to participate on a basis that would be consistent and commensurate with the very excellent negotiating work that has been done by staff. That's fine. But we don't want to be the reason why the county has been able to negotiate a reduction in rate simply to keep Crown out of the list of haulers. That seems to be what this whole, this staff report seems to drill down to, and that there's been a consideration given to rate reduction, and as a result, as long as Crown is not part of the mix. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony, Mr. Cohen. Our next speaker is Jim Harrison.
Hi, Jim Harrison. Last, in February when I was here, I said quite a bit, and I wrote the letter to each of you. And going back to this county study, studied to determine that there wasn't a need for more haulers, the rates were fair, services were being provided, and diversion recycling was excellent. I would like to say one thing. Last time I was here, I said egg plastic is, right now, 90% of us being recycled by us. We're doing about 90% of the collection. You know, because of lack of water, I guess next year it might be half as much plastic as we have this year. Not always the case. Egg plastic has been a continuous problem trying to recycle, but right now, we're recycling most all of it. I've been here to ask questions. Have any questions, Manny?
Any questions? No, thank you. Are there any other public speakers? We don't have any cards.
I do have some questions. I don't know if the hauler applicant for H Cattle is here, because I had some questions regarding the operation, and we know that there was a lot of what would be considered a nuisance in terms of a lot of flies breeding on some 400 tons of cold vegetables and fruits, and I guess trucked in maybe some straw.
Well, yes, we had a problem, and we took care of it, and we got, we had the environmental health come out and inspect it, and they've approved all of it. We, due to the drought, we didn't have enough cattle to handle the product that we took in, and we got too much, so we had to divert it to other resources, which is what we have done.
So as I, this might be more for staff, but I'm sure you know, to the, have you been a hauler in the past, a certified hauler?
I've been doing this for 30 years.
Okay, and does that involve using your property?
It involves using the property that I have leased, yes. We feed the cattle, the produce, or we used to. We don't now, because we take it to the recycling, to the compost places right now, until we get some water back.
Until you get some what?
Rain.
So how is rain related to the fact of whether you're going to use your site to be a dump site?
I need the water in order for the cattle to survive.
Okay.
Let me try to go on that if I could. You've been doing this for years, is that right?
I've been doing it for over 30 years, yes.
I mean, taking fruit-type waste like that?
Yes, yes, sir.
And putting down your cattle, and we've never had problems before?
I've never had problems.
And it's just normal that the fruit and what's happened, as you're saying, without the water, I don't have enough cattle to eat what was going, so too much was getting there, because you're supposed to have enough to eat within a certain period of time.
Yes, and that's what the understanding with the ag commissioner is, and I understand that. I actually was one who participated in writing the rules for the agricultural part, and I will admit that I got too much and did not control it properly, but that has been eliminated and has been taken care of.
So it's a natural practice that a lot of people use that for their...
There's a lot of cattlemen out there that are feeding cold.
But you need a whole lot more cattle for the same amount you were bringing in, is that what happened?
The amount I was getting in, yes.
Okay, that's it.
So what is, maybe the ag commissioner knows, just the amount of, how many cattle would you need for 400 tons? I mean, I'm just wondering.
I don't know where you came up with 400 tons.
From a letter that you wrote?
I got in straw from the racetrack, which had some manure in it. I went to a thing at the Farm Bureau who taught, showed us how to feed that. I didn't realize that they were going to haul as much as they did out there, and so we ended up with way too much, which I agree with, and we, in turn, actually with the help of some of the other haulers here, the legal haulers, we then took it over to the landfill and had it disposed of there. That's not a problem anymore, because I don't receive that.
Who does the hauling?
They did it from the racetrack. It wasn't something that I hauled into there. The racetrack brought it down.
Okay, thank you.
Let me just go on that.
Okay.
Which, I think she said this 400 tons on this letter that was written, was that the amount that had built up that was removed, is from the property?
Yes, yes, sir.
It wasn't normally 400 tons that was brought in? That was just because the cattle weren't able to eat it and do all that?
Yes, that's it.
Okay, all right. So now I understand the 400 tons. Great.
That was 400 tons so far, but could I ask the ag commissioner a question? You came up with guidelines for this kind of operation that we didn't have before?
Yes, yes. Back in October of last year, when we started to receive these complaints of these massive quantities of flies, we started to look at the area and see what was the source of the flies, and so what we wanted to do was to find the best management practices on how to feed these calls, and what we found was there was no such document. So working with the Ventura County Cattlemen's Association and the University of California Farm Advisors, we developed, and Mr. Harvey, we developed some best management practices on how to handle these calls so that the fly problem wouldn't be created, and so that's what we did, and we sent them out, we distributed them to everybody. That's what we did, and so we have those now available to folks so that if they bring in calls, and if they follow those practices and the best management practices document, they'll be able to manage the flies. If they don't, and they bring in too much, and they don't manage it correctly, then issues like flies are going to happen.
What are the standards then? Is it like per cattle, or, you know, the amount of coals based on the number of cattle? Is that how you determine it?
We didn't quantify it according to, like, so much per animal unit. It's more having, can they finish eating it or not?
Right.
Is kind of where we draw the line, and then what do you do with the feed that they don't consume it within a specific period of time, and what do you do to mitigate that so that the flies don't start to breed?
And so you first went out to see it in October of 2013?
We actually did, and the reason we went through all of these efforts to develop the best management practices is that we felt that if push came to shove, and we needed to say, "This is exceeding an agronomic value, and you actually are not protected under the right to farm ordinance," we wanted to be able to have something to hang our hat on, something that would say, "This is where we're drawing the line. If you go beyond this, you are not protected under the right to farm ordinance." And so, that was kind of the impetus of us developing this document to make sure that we were all in agreement, we're all on the same page, that if you do this, you'll be fine. If you do more than that, then you're not just doing it for the agronomic value.
And I guess, you know, just from reading the articles in the paper, it's been going on for a couple of years, even in October, and there were investigations, the Homer Association was looking at investigating the mayor, calling it like a sci-fi movie, there were so many flies, and so that, it does seem like it, you know, certainly was beyond what the right to farm ordinance would allow for. So now, you have to remove it within a certain period of time, and knowing that what's going to be brought to the site, I guess, will not be, you know, hundreds of tons of this again. And then I have also a question for Mr. Pecola, if I can.
Yeah, just to clarify, we won't receive anything that we can't feed within the 48-hour period, and if it isn't, then we will use the practices that are prescribed. We, like I said, we have been inspected by environmental health and have been written completely off that we're back under compliance, so we're back under the regulation to farm, which is what I was under first time, and we just let it get away, I'll just be honest with you. And I thought I had something that I could still be feeding with a straw, and I still think I could have been feeding it, because I don't believe that was the real issue of the flies, but we took care of what we were asked to do.
And I just, do you own the land?
No, it's owned by a bank currently. I just lease it.
You lease it?
Yes.
You're also a hauler, you're a hauler.
I'm a hauler.
That's your business, but you also...
We haul, and we do, I noticed you said just cattle feed. No, we haul trash too.
Okay, but I'm saying, but you're a hauler, but you also, this is a secondary business you do, which is raising cattle?
Yes, it's a secondary business where we raise the cattle to use the produce.
Right, I guess if we're talking about haulers, one thing, we're also talking about just your cattle operation is a different situation.
Yeah, they're two different, they're two, I'm the same person, but they're two different, and so they're kind of separated within what we do. But yeah, we're committed to do that, and we're not taking anything that we can't dispose, not dispose of, but be able to use, readily use for the livestock. Okay?
Mr. Pecola, I'm just not really clear on what this, once we allow for this agreement, what it does. For example, he has, he was talking about having waste hauled from Santa Anita, so is it allowing others to bring in waste to a site, or does it have to be operated by a particular owner? Is this a landfill? Has it been an illegal landfill? Those are the kind of questions I have, because it seems, you know, it definitely has been a nuisance in the past, and I'm just wondering, you know, what is it that we are granting here?
Okay. What is before you today is a commercial hauler agreement. If you were to approve this, in this case, H Cattle would be allowed to collect and haul. That's what this would allow. As far as where this material goes is, as you're aware, is a different jurisdiction, environmental health really oversees whether a given facility or land is in compliance. In this particular case, my understanding is this is agricultural operation, and ag commissioner got involved, and they have established this BMPs, and when I looked at the correspondence between H Cattle and environmental health, the notice of violation has been addressed, so that's the reason we are saying that they're complying with the requirements of our hauling agreements. In the future, if anything happens, certainly, we have to give proper notices to these haulers. If we were to act on existing haulers, we have that ability within the existing hauler agreements. If something is not addressed, we could follow through any violations if we have that authority within these agreements.
But I think that's really important, because I think the public also needs to know if something like this is happening. I mean, we had, you know, investigations by several different agencies, all trying to figure out what's with the flies, and it took a long time to find that out. When I think about the, I guess it was Limoneira and Agamin working together, we're allowing them to bring in from outside the area waste to make compost, you know, and that was a lot of discussion about making sure that we had... lot of discussion about making sure that we had, made sure that the area surrounding it isn't going to be affected. Got a fly?
Not a fly.
Fly over here. So I'm just looking at this particular site, if they're bringing in stuff from Santa Anita, and, you know, I'm just thinking, isn't this kind of equivalent to what Limoneira was doing in terms of what they were doing at their land? I mean, is that a normal ag practice, or is that now moving up to more of a landfill or, you know, type of operation? I understand what's before us now is just hauling, it's not the site, but I'm just, I would like to make sure that through this hauling agreement?
We can certainly.
We will be able to review it if we find problems with the location where the hauling is occurring to?
Yeah, I believe that would fall under the environmental health division. If issues like that come to our attention, we will consult with environmental health and appropriate agencies.
Okay, so it's, then it isn't along, it doesn't, it isn't associated with the hauling contract?
That's correct.
It's a separate issue?
That's correct. That's what I see.
And that was a one-time thing. We don't, we only got it because we thought it was feed. It's the only reason I received it.
Because you thought it was?
I thought it was feed. I actually fed quite a bit of it to the cattle before it occurred. I just got too much of it, but there, we only got it one time. I mean, that, we got a bunch of it at one time, but I'll never take it again after what happened.
Yeah, well, and I just, it's just a question I have, because I think as a hauler, you're the one that's operating?
Well, I didn't haul it, though. See, I didn't haul that out there. I was under the impression that I could feed it, which I did. I fed quite a bit of it.
Okay.
And then, what happened is we got the rains, the cattle left to the grass, they left it stand there. I stacked it instead of laying it out, thinking that, okay, when the grass is gone, I'll put it back out for them to feed, and in that process, it got wet, it got a little moldy in there, and I think we did cause a little bit of fly problem. We eliminated that. You can check the record on it, that we've taken it out, and it was a one-time deal. I personally, we didn't haul it. I mean, we hauled it to the dump to get rid of it, but we didn't have it hauled out to the ranch, but that was only because I went through a class that told me that straw was a viable feed for my livestock, and I thought a free source of feed was going to be great for me, and the next thing I know, I look up and I've got way too much there, because they were looking for places to go, because your mushroom plant got shut down in the county. And so I just thought I had a reliable source of feed.
So it was from the mushroom plant and Santa Anita?
No, Santa Anita got it from the racetrack, but they no longer was in existence, they were shut down during that period of time.
I see, you mean the racetrack got it from the mushroom place?
Yes.
No, the racetrack takes it to the mushroom place, and mushroom place got shut down, so the racetrack had no place to take it, so they took it to him.
And so that was, that's how you ended up?
That's how I ended up with it.
Because it was a feed source, you took it?
I took it as a feed source, thinking it was there.
So you were taking this not as a hauler? Had nothing to do with hauling?
No.
Wasn't your trucks, your, you're just taking it as a rancher?
Yes, that's all I was doing.
I think that's what, now I understand where it's all coming from.
It had nothing to do with the hauling business at all.
And it's only a one-time, one-time issue?
It was a one-time issue. I tried it once. I got, I'll be honest with you, I got it in one time and tried it. I put it out, catalyzed every bit of it, and I said, okay, I'll take some more. It's free feed. And then the next thing I know, I find out that they're hauling eight and nine loads of walking floors in there at night when I'm not even there, and I put a halt to it too late.
Okay, I understand.
So it really had nothing to do with my hauling business, it was, it was the cattle business.
Okay, and I thought you were hauling to your site?
I haul produce to my site. I also haul trash, sounds like everybody else does here. Currently, I'm not taking any produce out there, because it's going to the agro mine, and it's going over to farm share, so they can make compost out of it, because we don't have any cattle out there to eat it. If I had cattle out there, I'd take it out there to feed it to the cattle, but we have, we had nine springs on the 4,000 acres, we have one spring working, and we have sources from the county in two places other than that. We just don't have the water to support the cattle, so.
Right, it's unfortunate.
That's what we're doing temporarily, till we can get the grass back, or get the water back to where we can put the cattle back.
You really just can't have cattle if you don't have water, right?
Well, it'd be kind of like you, if you don't get enough water, you die. That's what happens to the cattle.
So just curious, where do you haul your, I mean, where do you pick up your trash that you're hauling?
Well, most of that stuff is in cities, so you're really not regulating that. I don't really have any of that out in the county. My trash is hauled from farmers, because it's a, when we started business doing it, was to keep my trucks busy during the winter time, and some of the farmers came to me and asked me if I would haul trash, buy a few trash bins and haul it. That's how I got into it, and then back in the original agreement, I was asked to join, because we were hauling trash. We haul about 25% of our business is trash, and.
She asked, where do you haul it to? You sell it to the two landfills that are available?
The two, the three landfills.
Three landfills?
You know, you've got the one in Santa Paula, because we haul a few of them out there in the Santa Paula area, and then, of course, Oxnard, and then Seminole.
Seminole, okay.
And then as far as the compost plus, like I said, again, Agro Mine gets some of it, and Food Share gets some of it.
Do we have other things we want to investigate on this relative to the issue in front of us today here?
Thank you for your answers, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Okay. I would like to have staff come up. Mr. Pratt, I think I'll start with you, in terms of responding to anything that you heard here in terms of the public testimony.
Good afternoon. For the record, my name's Jeff Pratt with Public Works Agency, Chair, Mr. Powers' Board. There were a number of things I heard that were confusing. One was that they weren't contacted until Friday. That might be true in their case, but I talked to Tim Frye some time ago. I don't have the exact dates, but I'm thinking it's a couple of weeks or more. I had to call him four times before I got a call back, and then I checked with staff. When I did talk to him, we went over the proposal, I told him that this would be going on the 5th. His question to me at that time was, well, I'm thinking about buying some of the existing companies, would that be a problem? I said, I don't know, got to check with the county council, ran it up the flagpole, got back to him again and said, nope, subject to the provisions of the agreement, which would mean that if they did that, they'd have to come back to your board for approval, and that was the last I heard about it. So in my mind, I thought things had been settled. Another thing I heard was that Crown was never asked about the 10% reduction. That's simply not true. I had Tim Frye sitting across from me with one of his staff persons, and I asked him straight out, would you agree to a 10% reduction, the maximum rate? He said, no, let the market drive it. That was asked and answered. So is there anything else in that testimony that you'd like me to respond to? And that was at the end of June, by the way, that conversation.
Okay.
Can I just ask him one question?
Supervisor Foy.
Mr. Cohen had said that, I guess, when this first thing went out is, there was a, to go out to the different haulers, whatever, and they're to be considered, as he used the words, to be considered, because when you send that out, when you guys send out stuff, there's no guarantee that you would ever get an opportunity to be in the county, was there?
No.
No, it's just the opportunity to be considered, to look at, right?
That's correct.
Because, I mean, I know that we see that with ambulance companies, want to do this, and it's just opportunity, but it's never a guarantee, so we don't have that guarantee you'd get that, right?
That's correct, and that is something that the first person who testified, they called it a bid. This is a best value job, not a bid, and that's, that's more.
That's what I wanted to ask, when they, he was very clear when he usually worked considered, I just wanted to make sure I was straight.
Okay. Mr. Smith, is there anything else that you think needs to be pointed out before we vote on this?
Well, the one thing I would point out in the board letter, and then, in some of the assertions, and the assertions being that the county was relying on this ordinance, let me get the number correct, 4750-4, which would, which, there's an allegation that implicitly the county is relying on that ordinance provision, and I just want, in our review of it, and I think staff would agree, that the county's not relying on that provision, and our direction to the board of supervisors is just, it has the discretion to determine if it's in the public interest to award these contracts to the 13 identified contractors on a non-competitive basis, and it would be non-exclusive basis, and that's the recommendation, and we think that's supportable and that's legal.
Thank you. Mr. Powers, you have a comment?
No, I just wanted, just to confirm with Mr. Pratt, that you didn't rely on that ordinance 4750-4 in making your recommendations?
That's correct.
All right. Thank you very much. If there are no other comments or questions, we're ready for a motion on the item. As soon as we get a screen there. All right, it's been moved, it's been seconded.
I just would like to say, as we're voting on this, that I appreciate the staff's hard work in doing this, and the idea that, I know our goal is to try to get the best value for our residents and everything else, and the idea that we're getting some tremendous haulers, hadn't had a lot of issues, but at the same time, appreciate the hard work they did to get a 10% reduction to the people. That's, on the regular haulers, that's been good. I mean, don't always have to move to get reductions and get the best value, so I'm glad to see that happen.
So we have a motion and a second, we're ready to vote. That motion passes unanimously, and we'll go back into closed session. Mr. Smith, will there be an announcement from closed session?
We do not expect any announcements.
We don't expect any announcements. So we'll adjourn from closed session? Thank you.